So, folks, we're gonna move through this. You know we're gonna have in-depth discussions, so we're gonna move through the other rigmarole as quickly as possible. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Barlow, can I have a second? Commissioner Orwell, all those in favor of the agenda as stated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those against? The motion for the agenda passage unanimously, thank you. At, what time is it, 6:05? I need for Karen to bring my glasses. I'm blind as a bat, 6:08.
Do you need, oh, you have the agenda.
Yeah, I'm also. And I'm gonna turn it over to the superintendent.
Oh, thank you.
I'm sorry, my apologies. Is there anybody that would like to speak in the public?
Yes.
Oh, please. Yeah. Don't mind me, I just, please come on up and if you don't mind coming over and sit down.
There was. Just two thoughts. I heard last, I think it was last week, Commissioner Barlow, and I've also heard some parents saying, "Why are we starting with a number? That feels wrong. We should start with the needs, and that leads us to the number." I've been doing budgets for many years. I've always been given a number. And then you work your needs and wants into that budget, into that number. And I know that the school system is not a company, it's not a nonprofit, but I think that the act of budgeting always starts with what is affordable by the organization. So, second thing is, I've heard the sentiment, and I'm totally paraphrasing, "We'll show Montpelier. We will put forth a budget with increased taxes, we'll show them that our constituents will support a tax increase." And I want to encourage you to put that aside when you're talking about the budgets and you're thinking about the numbers, because you're representing the taxpayers and you're representing the students. And that messaging to Montpelier should not be at the foremost when you're making these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Tyler Doggett. I'm a Burlington taxpayer. Last week, Mark Porter challenged each of you to go over the budget, looking for everything that wouldn't help a student graduate from high school and prepare for college. Mark said that you should at least consider cutting each item in the budget. I have two very different ideas about this. First, I think it's a mistake to think that, first, I think it's a mistake to think that you, the board, are in a position to find such cuts. I mean, as Stephanie stressed last week, education is a system and is an amazingly complicated system. And as some of you know, because I've told this directly, I hold you in incredibly high esteem, but except for Ann, I think none of you is an expert on education. And because of that, it's hard to think, how could you figure out what's gonna graduate, say, a fourth grader? We spend all sorts of money on fourth graders. They're ten. When I was a fourth grader, I wanted to be a bird scientist and a major league baseball player and a whaler. So, how can anyone, except an expert, know how to get a kid like that, who's much closer to kindergarten to graduation, to graduation? But unless you know these things, I don't see how you can carry out Mark's challenge, which is a relief, because my second idea about it is that the vision of education that Mark's challenge conveys is dispiriting. I would be horrified if my son's sixth grade teacher said his primary job was to get Isaac ready for seventh grade. That's a job, of course, but there are lots of other jobs, to interest him, to inspire him, to motivate him, to hook him on learning, to teach him how to work with others. It'd insult me and Isaac if Isaac's teacher simply tried to get him to seventh grade. Just getting kids onto the next levels is an insult to poor children who deserve higher expectations and a more expansive vision of what school should be. It's an insult to poor children who deserve, just like rich children, to be prepared to be informed, thoughtful, responsible citizens, who deserve, just like rich children, to have the option to go to the best colleges. This vision of education is inconsistent with Yau's stated goal of having ours be the best school system in the country. The visions, it's inconsistent with your own stated priorities of having all students achieve at the highest academic, intellectual, and personal potential, and of raising the bar. The vision Mark's challenge conveys is a vision of kids getting over a pretty low bar. As a taxpayer who's seen his taxes go through the roof under every single board in my thirteen years in Burlington, I think this isn't okay. If you're gonna ask a huge amount from me financially, you should ask a huge amount of our children academically, all of our children, and only a bigger budget does that, so I encourage you to pass one. Thank you.
Anybody?
Good evening. My name is Carol Henson, and first of all, thank you all for sitting on this board. I know that's not easy. I've lived in the New North End since 1974. I own two homes here. I'm a real estate agent, and I am hearing all sorts of numbers of what's gonna happen with taxes, and we just can't do it anymore. I mean, you just cannot do it. And if you're gonna make the best school system in the country, then let me ask the superintendent, will your children go here? I know you don't have to answer me right now, but I know your children don't go to our school district. I think people can only do it so much. I mean, we have a home on Stanford Road that we've owned for years. Our taxes have gone from $400 to $5,800, and we have a summer camp at Star Farm Beach that we're very lucky to have, and our taxes are now almost $9,000 for six months. Of course, now I can't take that off on my taxes, but that's not your fault at all. But really think about that. Think about the people here. And I know we're here for the children. I've never come to any school board meeting. I've always supported the school board. I have always voted for increases for the kids, but it's past that now. You've got people that just cannot afford it, and I want you to think about that when you prepare your budget, okay? Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please.
Sorry for the computer, it's a broken printer and sick child. I'm Nicole Tuig. I live in Ward Five. I'm a parent of two children in Champlain. I'd like to thank the board and the residents of Burlington for continuing to hold meetings and engage in discussions about this year's budget. We're at a critical juncture for this district and our nation as a whole when it comes to public education, and I'd like to just focus on three key points tonight. One, I stand by previous comments I've made to the board about this year's budget. We need to be bold and strong in our dedication to our district and our students. We cannot waver under political and financial pressure from Montpelier. I support a budget that could go as high as 9%, and even if that means we fail and have to go back to the public with a smaller budget, we've at least made an attempt and not started out with a small budget that puts us in a position of weakness in terms of our students. And we've really made the case that we have to serve our students properly, and that these are things we have to do to serve them properly. We need to get better at communicating the importance of a strong district to our community as a whole and how it impacts everyone, including retirees, homeowners, and businesses in Burlington. We really need to really develop a coalition in Burlington that emphasizes that. We need to start bringing everybody to the table in the entire community. I'm also all for finding savings, but in order to do that, we need to have a fully fleshed-out line item budget that includes org charts, salaries, and more. And I think it's the board's duty to provide that to Burlington residents as stewards of taxpayer dollars. We're lacking enough ESPs to meet IEPs. We still haven't been able to restore Paris to kindergarten classrooms, something that parents and teachers see the effects of throughout later school years. Teachers need increased professional development around trauma-informed practices on a variety of issues, not to mention new and emerging teacher practices, aligned curricula, and much more. But we need to start from an informed baseline, and that means a fully transparent line item budget. And number three, if we wanna close the achievement gap, which I think everyone is committed to doing, we need to start focusing on one key research-based item that is known to close the gap most effectively, and that's strong, experienced, dedicated teachers, and we're losing them. And to hear nearly weekly or monthly of fantastic dedicated teachers who are leaving our district and even more who are considering it, it's demoralizing for parents and teachers alike. These teachers have institutional knowledge and experience that's irreplaceable. If we truly wanna close the achievement gap, let's stop the bleeding and improve our district environment. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak, a public comment? Does anybody? All right, I'll call as public comment at this time and have board reflections. Anyone like to speak during board reflections? Commissioner Seguin.
Just a quick comment. There is a detailed budget online on the budget district website, and teacher salaries are all available as well in the annual report, so that information is readily available. If you have any trouble finding it, certainly let us know.
Commissioner Curry.
I just wanna comment that I'm both heartened and worried by the volume of messages we're getting, and appreciate that people wanna build some momentum around organizing to pass a budget, whatever it may be, and just bring up that it might be helpful if we're able to create a portal where everyone can read each other's comments in the community and the board can, you know, kind of shape our understanding, along with others. So, if that's something we could consider, I think it'd be great for everyone to see their neighbors' comments as well.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Commissioner Kleeman.
I just wanted to say that I am very sensitive to the financial issues at hand that raising taxes can cause. But I've also had conversations with teachers and parents in the district who are living the lack that we have right now and some of the troubles that we have in this district, where there aren't enough bodies in classrooms to help a child who needs attention at the beginning of a class. That's all this child needs, attention at the beginning of the class, but there's just not enough people there to do it. And we have, we had a ridiculous bus issue recently where the buses couldn't pick kids up from schools. And the one thing I do wanna say that amazes me and makes me feel really good about this community and our teachers, who work harder than anyone I know. We had teachers there at the school with these kids until five o'clock because they couldn't be taken to the after-school program. They found ways to entertain the kids and feed them, particularly at Champlain, so thank you to all of you at Champlain. And I have a lot of hope for finding a budget that will keep us moving in the right direction, recovering from the cuts we've made, but also trying to reconcile some of the hardships people are going to face with increased taxes. Thank you.
Anything? Commissioner Judson.
I wanted also to reiterate about the budget being available under BudgetOnbsdvt.org. I had a little bit of difficulty finding it, but I'd be glad to help you find it, because it's in a presentation, the last forty, it starts at page forty. It's at the last presentation that Yau did last week. I, too, am very sensitive to the financial difficulty for many, many people. I'm also aware of many people who aren't, not in financial difficulty, who don't want to have taxes raised, and many of them have moved to Florida for six months and a day so that they don't have to pay state taxes. And that's another burden that we're all feeling in the world of education. It's been really heartening to get a lot of emails from people giving us their opinions, and I would say, out of the maybe fifteen that I've received, a little more than half are, "Go for it, provide what we need for these kids. Even if you do 7% increase, you're still not adding anything, it's still a level-funded budget." So, I'd say a little over half are saying, "Go for it." But those are people who take the time to actually write, and that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else wish for a quick McLaren?
I just wanna say thanks to the folks that spoke tonight and to those who have reached out to the board and myself about the budget. I really appreciate hearing people's feedback and hope to hear a lot more from the community as we move forward, so, thank you. I also wanted to just say how pleased I am that we have a fully executed contract with our teachers, and I very much look forward to working with them moving forward to move, hopefully move forward from the strike and from our negotiations and build a really positive and productive working relationship, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. I'll close board reflections this time and turn it over to the superintendent for the budget update.
Thank you very much, Chair Porter. We are keen to share with you the presentation tonight. We have many slides and so many pieces of information we wanna share with you, so be patient with us throughout tonight. We wanna try to get through the entire piece and then open up for questions.
Can you give me one second? I just wanted to raise expertise. We're not taking a vote or anything tonight, right? So, this is information gap and a lot of Q and A, a lot of digging down to the next level if we can. We're gonna have at least one, if not a second, meeting between now and next Tuesday night, 'cause we have to have the budget approval for Wednesday, next Wednesday, a week from Wednesday. So, just, this is gonna be another good discussion time for us. Also, if everybody could hold their questions until, all questions, until they ask if they wanna solicit any at a point in time, so please write down your questions, one or two.
Can you get this on the board?
As soon as we're done.
Commissioner Curry. Mm-hmm. Wanted to.
Okay.
Which is my free one, we do.
You can't put it up, you can't put the whole thing up yet.
Yeah. I have one question with ten.
We'll get it up there.
We'll get it up. So, is everybody good with that? Any questions on that?
Any questions?
It's yours.
Okay, thank you. As I said, the format of the presentation, we're gonna take some time tonight to sort of articulate some of the rationale around some of the pieces and also respond to some questions that we've had throughout the process from community members asking, "What about this? What about this? And you said this about enrollment?" So, I think it's a good opportunity to sort of give people some of that context in terms of the why, and I have found, even in the last few weeks, when we've had the time to explain to people some of the challenges we have, they're a little more understanding in terms of what the task at hand is and are reasonable in terms of hearing information we have to share with them. So, we're gonna have Senior Director Lavry to start. We're not gonna start from the beginning, but, wanna pream?
Right. Yeah, in fact, we're gonna move quickly through a bunch of the slides that have been a part of other presentations. We left them in here just so that someone who might be coming to this for the first time could kind of see, could have a broader context, but.
Can you give me one second? I'm sorry. Folks, if there's anybody over there that can't see this, we set up a bunch of chairs behind us over here. If you wanna move over here so you can see if it's a little bit easier for you, please feel free to. I think we got about twenty-five.
You can go that side as well.
Yeah, and on that other side, we got about twenty-five seats behind us to make sure people could go someplace, so.
Okay, so, I'm gonna move through, just, and we will get the presentation up on board docs after the meeting, but in the interest of having folks pay attention to what we're actually doing and saying, we haven't put it up there yet. So, I'm gonna move through all these slides, are things that we've covered before, and I'm going to get to kind of the area where we left off our discussion at the last meeting. So, this slide you've seen before, but I just wanted to remind folks of the fiscal context that we're dealing with. There are four variables, again, that contribute to the setting of tax rates under Vermont Education Finance Law. One of them is how much we spend, and really, and more specifically, how much money we spend out of the education fund per equalized pupil. So, that's the first variable, education spending. Equalized pupil count in Burlington this year, we had a small, a very small decline, doesn't have a major impact on tax rates either way. Then we have two other variables, the homestead dollar yield and the common level of appraisal. Both of these changed in a direction that puts upward pressure on tax rates, substantial upward pressure, in fact. And so, as we discussed last time, the challenge is that even in the absence of any new spending, we would be facing a significant tax increase, and we will show you how we've done our best to mitigate some of that impact while also trying to control or trying to add some of the new investments without ballooning costs. This other slide is something, again, that we left off with last time. We just wanted to put it up there to remind folks where we left off and where we are starting from. So, we were facing significant tax rate increases, as I said, in the absence of any changes, but we also wanted to make a significant amount of new investments, almost $1.1 million. So, that would put additional upward pressure on the tax rate, and we laid out a few scenarios as far as what we would need to do on the spending side to bring tax rates into ranges like 6.4 and 2%, which we ended up not pursuing things that aggressively, but we wanted to remind folks those were the options that we had discussed.
Thank you. And so, that's where we left off last meeting, and the board had a really robust conversation around the positives and negatives of the challenges we have put forward, and we walked away with some things that we heard that we wanted to incorporate into our work over the last few days to bring forward. So, what I heard in the conversation, both from community members and from board, was the level of frustration, frustration around the variables that Nate just shared in terms of the impact on our tax impact, frustration around the state of the education fund with the state level in terms of 50 million deficit putting us in a certain situation, and also the frustration from the board members understanding that we do need investments in our schools to support our students, but at the same time, how do we get to something that will be affordable and sustainable for community members? So, there were mutual sort of challenges there, but we did hear that, and people expressed themselves quite clearly in terms of, one, I would say that pretty much there was consensus around having some investments in our budget to continue to support our students. There was conversations around what would be an acceptable tax impact. I know you're gonna continue to have that conversation today, but I heard a range, and it's sort of, people were looking at, not necessarily wanna go to the double digits, but something in the middle, and we heard ranges of people saying numbers from four to up to like seven, and so we considered that in terms of our conversations and our strategy in terms of moving things forward. So, with that, the first segment of the presentation is going to show you the investments we plan to incorporate into the budget as a recommendation to the board, and we have a number of strategies that we've employed to try to mitigate the impact on that. So, we'll go through that part, then I'll get to the stage two. You've seen this slide before. No significant change on these investments. We did, in the last meeting, remove $100,000 that we had around outfitting for some of the classrooms and new facilities, and we've come up with a strategy of looking at implementing some of that throughout the process of the bond. We've sort of been approving how we'll gradually build those pieces in as we move forward. So, that helps in terms of the bottom line, but we felt that we needed to continue to support these items, 'cause these were quite necessary, and these were items that came from our staff and discussions in terms of prioritizing, and felt that these were well worthwhile to continue to support the enhancements in our system. This next slide shows you similar, and I'll go back and say that, if you remember, when we first started with the budget process, we started with the list of like $6 million worth of items from staff and community, and then we went through our process of doing analysis and aligning with strategic plan and prioritizing, and we got to close to $2 million, and then last time we came, we were under 1.51, and so we've done some additional work to reduce that. But part of this investment part is we spent the last few days really looking at grants, doing things differently, finding other strategies, and trying to find ways to support some of these investments that will still have a positive impact on our tax, on our tax. And we've been able to do that. So, I'm just, so you'll see, when you see a yellow highlighted area, we have found a different way to continue to support this investment, but without including it into our investment impact, right? So, you look here, the social workers for middle schools, we know that that's a high need in terms of social-emotional supports at the middle school level, and we have come up with some strategies how we can continue to put the investment we initially had in there, but not have it included into our tax impact there. The summer schools, we wanted to expand summer school in terms of reducing the waitlist and continue to support that, and we've come up with, we've come up with strategies in order to be able to do that as well, too. I will say that, once I finish with this, we're gonna get to the section around some of the areas that we've actually recaptured dollars, and that's how we're able to support all these items, as well as the alternative funding pieces. And so, we'll give you some rationale around what we've sort of targeted around that. So, that gives you the equitable climate piece there. And then, inclusive teaching and learning, we've talked about achievement gap is a priority for us. We believe that we've now found alternative grants and other sources to be able to continue the professional development that we're gonna need to build the capacity for our teachers to deliver on closing the achievement gap in the next year. And also, one of the key things that came from our staff is a achievement gap leader to support coordinating the research and data team, the achievement gap team, and working with the data and working with schools. And we've come up with a strategy, initially, the ticket was about $100,000, so we've come up with a strategy of getting a grant that'll cover half of that cost, and so we'll be able to implement it by just having an investment of $50,000 from the, from our general fund. And then, lastly on this slide is the middle school electives. We've gone back to the middle schools and had them kind of do analysis around what they wanted to use those elective additional allocations for, and we're able to come back that they essentially really needed just a .5 and didn't need another .5. Initially, we had a 1.0, which we were gonna split between the two schools, but one school we gave a full FTE last year to, and the numbers have sort of plateaued, so they're able to continue to get that support, and we'll be able to support the school that's deficient in order to offer those electives for the students in that, in that middle school. Okay? So, as we move to reallocations or reductions, so, just wanted to kind of give a philosophical statement in terms of, you will see that we're gonna go through areas where we're gonna recapture, reduce, and eliminate current staffing or operational items that we have going for, but we wanted to assure everyone that while we were going through this process, we wanted to make sure that we're able to stay committed to these areas, right? So, even though we've been able to recapture some dollars, we're still gonna be able to maintain the class sizes for all our classes. We're gonna stay within the standards, and we're very, we're really comfortable with where we are, and you'll see that in the slides when we come forward, we'll be able to share that with you. We wanna increase social-emotional support, so we're gonna be able to continue to do that, because we know that the mental health and social-emotional, pro-social skills development is critical for our students, and we have challenges in our system, and we need to continue to support that. It can't get to the learning in terms of the academics if you can't address those issues, and our staff have been emphasizing to continue to support. We wanna surely preserve special education supports. We, in the area of special ed, we continuously look at ways to make the program more accessible to all our students and our parents, and it's a continuous work and process in terms of doing things differently and also finding grants and getting other resources. But we definitely identify, this is an area that we cannot afford to reduce any sort of allocations at this time, and we've been able to maintain the supports we've been given, and you've seen in the investment area, we're actually investing more into special education. Similar to ELL supports, ELL supports, same statements, I would say to that, we're gonna be able to continue to support ELL. I've talked about the enrollment plateauing down because of the lack of influx in the recent years from refugees or immigrants, but we still do have a considerable number of ELL students that we are supporting currently, and we still are getting some, so we wanna continue to make sure that we can provide the supports they need to get to the level that we feel is appropriate so they can graduate in due time as well. And of course, maintaining multi- liaison staff, we know those are critical staff pieces that we need, and this is something we have to do in terms of the federal funding changing, and we have to sort of make that adjustments, so. And then, the achievement gap investments, we can't go away from that. That is one of our priorities. So, that'll always be a focus in terms of reallocating resources. And I'll even speak to some of the slides in terms of how we're taking some existing resources and using it differently in terms of achieving the gap, closing the gap and raising the bar. Same time, restorative practices is an area that we want to continue to improve. So, there won't be any diminished sort of investments in that area as well, too. So, before we went into some of the reallocation reductions, I wanted to assure everyone that these are our sort of philosophical principles that we put forward when we were making these reductions. There are other reductions we could have made, but it wouldn't fit into these criteria. So, we've had to say no, we want to stay true to this. And something that we very much feel comfortable coming forward and saying, this is where we're at this, at this point.
Sure. So, we wanted to start off in the area of the kind of central office and administrative functions. We did a quick recap of this last time, and we felt was just worthy of sharing again because we always get questions. And as to the degree to which we've made reductions here, so we wanted to first provide a brief reminder of some of the positions, particularly the upper kind of level administrative positions that over the past few years have been eliminated from the budget. And these, none of these are slated to come back in what we have here. So, we wanted just to be clear about that. So, then, we were going further beyond those, and we identified additional reductions for fiscal year 2019. And you can see there's a list here of both eliminating another senior director position as well as some other administrative or operational positions that are, that are, you know, there will be an impact on some of these, particularly when we talk about, you know, it might seem simple to get rid of kind of maintenance and facilities type of positions. But one of the challenges for our staff there is to be able to get all the work done despite having fewer people. So, it's not, I don't want to in any way be dismissive of the fact that there is an impact to making these changes. But one of the things that we heard loud and clear from the board was to minimize the impact on direct instructional support positions. And so, that was what drove these decisions here. And you'll see this is the single largest area of reductions in what we're putting forth here, would save somewhat over half a million dollars.
And I think I made comments the last time when we spoke around the central office. And we showed that other slides intentionally to show that each year we've captured significant savings from central office. And I believe that we're at the point where we're doing the sort of reorganization and figuring out, okay, we're deficient here. And I know at some point, I'll be coming back to the board and saying, hey, look, over the last few years, we've done over a million dollars. And now, we're at the right size, and we know that we're, you know, two or three positions out or something. But at this point, in an effort to sort of maintain some of the investments that our schools are really asking for, we're willing to look at these reductions this year in order to start the implementation of those other areas. Hope people don't take this lightly because I know that the central office is always a target in terms of reductions. And just because we're able to find it, it's only because I'm making our staff do it, right? And they're willing to kind of find and, you know, find resources. And we're able to trade off to say, this is what we're going to be able to invest in our schools if we can do this and doing that, but it's on their backs. And eventually, we break. So, don't be surprised if at some point I come back and say, remember the last three years, what we've been doing, okay? And also, I hope people are sensitive to, we get quite a few communications from individuals that want services from us at the central office. Both our teachers and our staff, and they go, I called somebody in HR and I can't get, this is why, right? Because if you cut that piece out, you're necessarily not going to get the same level of service. So, people need to sort of consider that and understand that that's also, that's also there, right?
So, before we talk about some of the reductions and reallocations that are more closely related to instructional positions, we wanted to provide some of the context. There's been a lot of discussion publicly about student-teacher ratios in Vermont. And so, we thought it was useful to look at a couple different types of ratios, both a ratio of our number of contracted positions to all of the students that we have in our district. This is, in fact, probably a little generous in that included in the student side of this equation are students who are attending, for example, our preschool partner programs. They get some services from if they're special ed. But a lot of those students, we don't actually serve in our building. Similarly, students that are tuitioned to independent special ed students. However, in the interest of keeping the arithmetic simple here, we just wanted to show the ratio of FTEs on teacher contracts to students in Burlington. But then, we also wanted to contrast that to kind of what is the typical experience of a student in a classroom? What kind of class size are they facing? And so, that's where we included the range of other ratios here at the elementary 19 to 1, middle school 23 to 1, and the high school with a range of 17 to 1 to 21 to 1, depending on department. Again, these are obviously averages. You'll have some classes with more students and some classes with fewer. It's also important, you know, we have in the why the difference in the note down there to understand there are a number of positions that are teacher contracted positions, but are not what we included in these classroom ratios. So, all your nurses, your special educators, those positions are why you can, how you get to essentially a 9.9 to 1 ratio across the district. But the kind of what we think of as the classroom or the homeroom, whatever language you might want to use, those are the ratios that you might experience as a child in the class. But obviously, there are all these other supports that, some of which push into classes, some of which take students out of classes. You know, there's a lot of different ways that this plays out. But we thought it was helpful for folks to see what Burlington, like kind of what the ratios are in Burlington as we move into some of the other choices we had to make.
Excellent. And I would say for the first number, the nine to one ratio, that isn't comparable to numbers that you've seen from the governor's memo, the secretary Holcomb's memo, and the numbers around four to one, five to one. And we were kind of generous in our analysis because we were trying to be realistic in terms of actual contact. So, if you were to take, if we wanted to inflate this number and say, everyone who works for BSD was the ratio, and I think that's probably sort of the metrics that the state used, then we could get closer to that number in terms of five to one. But the 99 to one gives us, gives us a perspective in terms of where we are. And then, we had to do the analysis around the school level. And I would say that the, one of the things we didn't provide for you in this is the highs and the lows, right? Particularly at the high schools, right? You have some classes that might be 15 in a class and some classes that might be, you know, at the upper end of like 25, right? And that's, those are the marginal, but the averages are what fall in between here.
So, the first area is the high school in the tech center. Here, we've got four different proposed reductions. One FTE in the business department. There's been low student interest in those courses. And we think that this is a good opportunity to reduce an FTE from that. The second reduction, 1.0 FTE in physical education is more about really doing things differently, providing PE credit for participation in athletics. This is something that we've talked about in the past, but we haven't actually implemented. And we know that this is done elsewhere, including our neighbors in Champlain Valley. So, this is, there's really no good reason not to do this. I think we felt like this was the right time. It was the necessary time to do it. And so, this would result, we're estimating in one position reduction from the phys ed department at the high school. And the third one is a reduction in, of one FTE at the tech center. One of our areas there, we have two instructors, and the enrollment doesn't justify two. We can serve all the kind of current enrollment with just one instructor there. And the last one is smaller dollars, but we felt that we needed to look at the non kind of instructional components of what goes on at the high school. And so, we identified two sports that we could stop supporting with district funds. And those students that participate in those sports, because they're kind of on an individual basis, can potentially still participate in the races and the events. They just, you know, we wouldn't be paying for a coach and that sort of thing. So, that would be, that's what is referenced there with the sports reductions.
Just to emphasize that the FTE reductions, this does not mean that these programs are no longer there. For instance, example of physical education does not mean there's no longer a physical education program. Just means our allocation of four teachers are going down to three, and we can still provide the services to those, to those students. And we did a hard look at some of the athletics as well, too. And I love golf as well, but it's something that we need to look at in terms of how to find savings. And I know that's an area that many of our community members would not want us to look at. But if we're, to be fair, if we're looking at the sort of the academic and instructional areas, we need to look at the athletics and co-curriculars as well, too.
Middle school, again, the enrollment's projected increase there. We've been trying to make some additional investments for a couple of years based on the, what the data suggests about our challenges at the middle school level. So, we haven't proposed any reductions from what we presented earlier at the middle school level.
Elementary allocation reductions. The first statement there sort of illustrates, based on our analysis, we have seven teacher positions that we could reduce to add to the recapturing of savings. That would bring our current, our current elementary homeroom ratios is 19 to 1. And the AOE guidelines range from 22 to 25. So, we would still be well within that range. But our proposal, in order to keep some stability, even though we could do it, is to go for the three, three reductions, which would give us, which would move our ratio to 19.9, which we don't believe is that significant. And, but yet, would capture some significant dollars to be able to recapture some of the supports that are needed. So, what, wanted to break it down for you what the three look like, the three that we identified, and how we would be able to implement it and to ensure people that we're still able to deliver the regular program and the supports that are needed. So, at Flynn, if we were to take the one reduction, we moved from three teachers to two teachers for second grade in terms of the analysis we have. So, two teachers can certainly service the projected 44 students. That would still keep us within the 22 students per classroom. And the trend for us is even though we project, you saw some of the numbers we shared before, by September, those numbers are lower. So, they wouldn't grow, they would reduce. So, we're very much, we're very much comfortable with that one in particular. At Sustainability Academy, we have a situation where we could take reductions from four teachers to three teachers between the first and second grade. And we only need three teachers to service 60 projected students, right? And that still keeps us within the standard of 22 students in a classroom, well below the standard, and we could still operate as we did this year as well. And then, finally, at Smith, which has a different threshold because it's higher grades, we can make a reduction from three teachers to two teachers for the fifth grade. We only need two teachers to service 46 projected students. And that still keeps us below the agency guidelines and recommendations of 25 students in the classroom. The, this is what I want to, I want to share because many people probably are not even aware of this particular resource. This was a strategy that was employed, I think, just prior to my arriving. And there was an implementation plan around interventionists to do some work with students in schools. And we've been looking at this particular resource and how to recapture it to identify with our new strategic plan around achievement gap. And we know from our analysis that the initial plan has not been implemented the way that it was set forth. One of the particular things that I found out that the, when they instituted this, they were going to increase the school day by an hour in order for the interventions to do some particular work specifically with targeted students. That never happened, of course. And right now, we have inconsistency around our district in terms of all the schools. We currently have 12 FTEs. These are centrally assigned into schools. And each schools are using them slightly differently. And that's one of the challenges we've been, we've been struggling with in terms of having a systemic approach to adjust achievement gap. So, this gives us the opportunity now to actually recapture the six positions and to provide the supports we need in order to deliver the kind of instruction that we think is needed to close the gap. This is an area that we were looking at regardless of budget. It just gives us an opportunity. If the board even gave me instruction, I would still be saying we're going to be, you know, moving this to four teachers or three teachers. We would still be doing something with this particular resource. This has, this does not have a direct impact on the classrooms. We already talked about the classroom instruction. These are additional resources that we've assigned from Stephanie Phillips. And I forget, the former student services director, the position that we eliminated, Dylan McManair, that initially started, but the plan was never implemented. So, we've had these people sort of out there floating. No, these are not the psychologists, no. He was also ahead of other things as well. So, yeah, so we're very much comfortable with repurposing the, this particular resource and aligning it with our new strategic plan and being able to support. And at the same time, being able to capture those dollars so we can put back into the investments that our staff have been asking for.
So, we wanted to just spend a few minutes briefly talking about the strategy with respect to position reductions. There is a natural attrition, and we think that's likely to minimize involuntary separations, the turnover that it just occurs normally with retirements and people just leaving and moving on to other places. We think that's going to minimize the actual number of involuntary separations. However, we think it's important just for folks to understand kind of procedurally what happens. If we go forward with this plan, we will have to issue reduction in force notices because we have contractual deadlines that we have to meet to provide those notices, even if subsequent to that deadline, we get confirmation of a retirement that means that that person doesn't have to go through the reduction process. We still have to, we have a much earlier deadline that's set in the contract where we have to provide this notice. So, it obviously creates understandable tension and frustration on the part of employees. But until we have a change in that contractual provision, we're, we have to do it this way to ensure that we actually can make the changes that we're describing.
One of the pieces that sort of partners with this is, you know, you might often hear from administrators that I just hired that teacher, and they're great, and we're going to have to put them on a RIF. But what we're saying here is that based on the trend that we've had the last few years, we know the few teachers that may be RIF, that the likelihood of them being retained is really high. You know, I just don't want to risk saying it'll happen permanently because that's the process contractually, we have to go through that seniority piece. But that's to reassure our staff, our administrators, and also for board members who might be concerned about staff that, you know, we've just recently hired and started investing in, they might be displaced, that the likelihood of that happening is very minimal.
So, what does it all add up to here? This is a simple summary of our expenditures. If you recall, last time, we had a general fund expenditure total of a little over $74 million. We've reduced the number of enhancements. At the last presentation, that number was over 1.1 million dollars. So, we've brought that down to just over $850,000 worth of enhancements. And then, we ran through all those slides. If you add them up, you can see there's 1.3, 1.36 million dollars worth of reductions across the system. So, that gives us a new general fund expenditure budget. Then, the question, the other question we raised last time was, do, kind of, how do we pay for this? And one strategy that we're recommending is to apply the surplus funds we have available to buy down the tax rate and, or conversely, to avoid making any deeper reductions than we've already made. So, we wanted to illustrate, again, with our new numbers, the difference. So, the column that says before use of surplus reflects changes to the general fund budget. And you can see that with our reduction to the enhancements and the additional reductions to other programs, it still results in an 8.82% tax increase. If you go to the second column, after use of surplus, you can see that we're actually looking at a slight decrease in our total education spending, actually less than last year. And we're still facing a 6.92% tax increase. And we're still facing a six point nine two percent tax impact. And so the theme we wanted to sound here is that we've actually, we feel like we've done our part, so to speak, in controlling spending. We're actually proposing here a scenario in which spending from the education fund decreases. And yet we're still faced a tax increase. And I did just kind of a what-if analysis to see, suppose that the other variables, our, the dollar yield from the state and the CLA number had remained unchanged from the prior year, those variables that have nothing to do with our student spending, this budget here would actually propose, would result in a very small tax rate reduction of two tenths of one percent. So it just shows you how significant the impact is of those, those unrelated variables, the, the, the dollar yield and the CLA to our proposal here. So hopefully people can follow that. We just thought it was important to emphasize it. Obviously, in this scenario, again, we're recommending the application of the surplus. I want to say for, I don't know how many times I've said it, but I'll say it again. Surplus is one-time money through the combination of savings and revenues and, and things that happen during the course of the year. We try to end the year with a surplus. But we know that when you're building, you're supporting ongoing operations with a million dollars of surplus funds, you are taking a chance because next year at this time, if we don't have that money, then we will be in a position to have to find dollars to pay for that revenue we don't have. So we'll do our best to generate surpluses and, and be very careful, husband our resources. But it's worth everyone understanding that there, what we're essentially doing is creating a structural deficit in our, in our budget. And some of the new investments that we're making are kind of one-time in nature, but certainly not all of them. So there is some risk involved long-term. So the last thing, this is a new feature of our presentation, but we, we know that there's been some talk about it. We wanted to update folks. We, we just got some feedback today. In fact, we proposed last week a series of opportunities for the city to do things that we believe would comply with AOE restrictions and also help reduce the budget pressure that the school's facing. This, again, these are ideas that we've talked about with the, the use of the pilot revenues that the city has. So we put forward a series of proposals. We did hear back today that the city was willing to commit to the sixteen thousand dollar increase in support for transportation costs as well as a very modest increase in some of the recreational supports. We were hoping for a lot more investment in this and, but that is what we've been, been supported so far.
So just in wrapping up in this particular issue, I mean, we spent considerable hours and time on this from, dating back from, I guess, last year and working with the board and small committees and Nate and I and Commissioner Curry and I attended a few city council meetings and made proposals. And this last representation is sort of items that we were able to identify that the city already has engagement with us. So it would mean just them expanding on their contributions. So the threshold of evaluating from the AOE, whether this is available or not, would be removed. And this was the result of it in terms of the sixteen thousand and the thirty thousand. We know that if we were able to capture, I think it's three hundred thousand is about half a percentage point. And we had slightly more than that in here, hoping to be able to capture that. But that's where we're at at this point. And we're at the stage where we have to make decisions, right? We have about a week, so we're going to have to kind of proceed on. And we didn't capture any of this until, but we know that board members have been asking, the community members have been asking as well, too. But we wanted to share this information that we haven't dropped the ball in terms of still looking to access some of these dollars. And we've had some success, but not to the degree of success that, that we initially were, were hoping for.
Yeah, just want to emphasize one more point. So the first two items on there, those are things that the city currently provides support to the school district for and had received the blessing of the Agency of Education. What we're talking about, the numbers up here reflect what would be an addition to the city's current level of support. Just so it's not confusing, we wouldn't be asking for two hundred and seventy-five total. We're talking about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in addition to what we, the support that we already, that we already get.
It's part of the pilot money that, the million and a half that we used to get every year for...
That's the genesis of this discussion, presumably that, that's one option. If the city wanted to use those funds to provide the support. But at the end of the day, the city would decide what source of revenue they wanted to use to pay for this if they wanted to make this commitment.
Right, but this would be...
Yes, it could be. Okay, next steps. So next step actually is the conversation with the board to deliberate over the information that you've received here. We know that we're going to create some opportunities for community input. And then final budget recommendations. And we'll have the ballot question once we're prepared. Some of the strategies around community input, we will be looking at probably starting by noon tomorrow. My communications office is, officer is here. We're looking at sending out, giving community members access to a survey or online link where people can comment and give some feedback. And we can gather some data for the board to share back in their deliberations in terms of what community members are really thinking. It is difficult, I know how difficult it is for the board because we get the emails, right? And you get one side or the other. And it's hard to really gauge what people are really willing to support. And so we've been working on some, some electronic tools that hopefully we can finalize tonight and be able to share with the board and put out to the community. And we'll publicize that through many sources and through media in terms of how people can access and give us inputs. And that'll give you some really good context in terms of what people feel about our recommendation and what, to give you some guidance around direction. So with that, we would be willing to take questions from, from the board.
Commissioner McLaren?
Can I pass?
Certainly can, I'm just trying to, just want to make sure everybody has an opportunity. Commissioner Howell?
I have a couple of questions. My first one is that taking three, or however many teachers that was from, and this is always hard because, no, keep going way back where it was from the three-grade schools. Yeah, it is three. Those are three of our highest SES schools. So we are going to take staff from them when what I hear is that, that those, is some of those schools are in great need. Now, if you didn't need them in fourth grade, that you would put them, then, then you'd move the teacher to the kindergarten or somewhere else where they absolutely need them. I guess I, I question cutting in those buildings.
It's, it's nine positions with the interventions. Elementary schools is nine positions with the interventions.
No, just hold on a second.
That's all right, but, okay, well, if there's nine, then that's...
One of the things that we need to look at is that...
This exercise is something we should be doing actually every year in terms of looking at enrollment numbers and comparing. Because if you have a hundred students one year and then you have eighty next year, you don't need the same level of resource. We have considered an equity index for these needy schools. So this is already with the equity index, we're talking about enrollment. So if you look at any one of these, if you take SA, let's say, or, and you've got three teachers, you've got four teachers for sixty students, you can certainly still provide the regular class programming they have this year with three teachers with sixty students. That's twenty students in a class, right?
But if those are high SES schools, we have a lot of mental health problems and a lot of other problems in these schools. So you're taking and giving a far larger class when maybe one of those classes needs to only have fifteen. I, I'm not trying to tell you how to do it. It just seems amazing to me that where we're cutting are the highest impoverished schools in our district. And that really bothers me.
Ms. Seguino?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for the hard work of finding some of these savings. I'm, I'm surprised. I didn't think you were going to be able to, to do this in a way that I would feel comfortable with. So just two comments right now and we'll come back around again. I think the idea of an online portal for feedback from the community is important. And I, I think it's important for the very polarized people, comments that we've gotten, for people to hear the other side. And I'm, so I'm hoping that people's comments will be available to everybody. And perhaps if people want to be anonymous, that would be fine as well. But I, I think it's important that we, we tend to live in silos and we don't hear the other side. And so I, I think it will help the public understand what we're trying to balance here. And we're trying to find some balance. So I wanted to talk about the elementary positions as well. As I understand you, you have taken into account the fact that these are high-need schools with the equity index. That said, I want to just offer a thought. This was the least palatable of all of the cuts for me. And I understand that AOE develops class sizes criteria. But my concern is, it, what I have hear from teachers and so forth is that, and it's partly a question, I'm not sure if AOE is developing these class sizes based on equalized pupils. And so my concern is that twenty-two students who have no special needs or no language needs or whatever is different than a class that has a number of special ed students, EL students, and so on and so forth. So I, I just want to register a concern. I know this is a bigger discussion, but I, I want to just, and I'm going to be straight here, that's my tendency, so I'll just do it again. I would really like to see this not cut. And I understand that would put us over seven percent and that, that there is some politics around that, right? That a six point something is more palatable than seven plus. And I understand the, the, the challenge we have of selling a budget to the public. But I, I do, I do have some concerns about that.
Ms. Curry?
Thanks. So first, thank you for another excellent job at digging into the budget and revealing kind of the dynamics behind what's going on. And second, thank you for asking your staff at Central Office to make an additional sacrifice. I know since you've been here, you've cut six hundred thousand dollars out of Central Office. Before you got here, the board and Howard Smith cut at least a hundred and fifty thousand. We lost a chief operating officer who ran Central Office while our former superintendent went out into the community to form relationships with everyone. And I know you haven't had the opportunity to do that for a reason. So another five hundred and forty thousand dollars is significant. I appreciate that you didn't, that you considered the need to not affect direct educational services in that thinking. I have about six or seven questions. I also just want to say that this is the board's kind of most robust time to have a discussion. This is the only thing on the budget. So I'm just going to ask all the board members to please participate fully and, and hopefully we can take the time we need tonight to really have a good, rich discussion and get all our questions answered tonight. So I don't, I'm not going to ask my questions now. I'm just going to give you the overall impressions in addition to thanking you for those, the approaches you've taken. I understand the BHS reductions to, to a point, and I want to understand the ratios better. But I am alarmed by the elementary school discussion. And I am not sure I can go there. I'll just say with the interventionists, I saw interventionists in action in Sustainability Academy. I don't know if that was done right or not. But what I saw was they allowed for breakouts in math and reading for students who needed support. And that allowed both a, a time in the classroom when there were fewer students and it allowed those students to get some exceptional work through that intervention that had documented outcomes. And so I don't know if SA did things differently, but what I, from my kid going there, from what I saw, it was extremely impressive that, the difference it made. So I didn't understand the comment that it doesn't have an impact on classrooms. And I would be interested in learning more about why it may or may not have an impact on students. But the elementary school discussion is really alarming to me. And I'm not, and, and when I look at a six point two percent increase and I think about that versus seven point one, that is such a minimal difference to me to sacrifice. Like when I read the BEA surveys that the, that Bob Church sent me from the elementary school and all we've been hearing about since I was part of the budget that had to cut the paras is the pressures in the elementary school. And if we ever expected kids to read by third grade, I don't think this is going to get us there. But I don't have an educational background, so I'm willing to try and be educated about that. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
I remember last year that the auditor implied... Well, first I wanted to say thanks for looking past the familiar and towards the current needs that we have. Last year, I remember that the auditor implied that the Central Office needs more support. It was either that it needs more support or it was on the edge of not being able to, to do its job well because of all the cuts that had happened. My, are we doing questions now or just overall impression? So my, my first question to you is, do you feel as if you can support the district with the services that you have now in Central Office?
I think we're, we're just on the threshold.
Yeah.
And the only reason why I have any level of confidence is because we've got some really good staff that have come around. And we've got some new staff, too, right? So it takes some time for them to build their capacity. And I know when the auditor was here last year, we were just in transition in bringing on some new people. And so you could really see it, right? So some of them have been able to build capacity. As I said, though, there is a period of time, you know, in each role, there's a capacity building, some three months, some is six months, some is nine months, right? So we're in that stage right now. That's why I was kind of uncertain, saying, okay. But I'm pretty sure once that analysis has happened, I'll probably come back and saying, well, you know what? We've done this, we've done it with as little as possible, we've done some things differently. And that's one of the things that we were really going for is to try to change our strategy. You saw in the presentations earlier, yeah, through board presentations and things, we've been using more electronic-based information and how people gather information and gather, and that helps as well. But how much that changes capacity, you don't know until people have built that capacity as well, too. So yeah, I am hesitant in even putting it forward. But I just know that the, the things that we were, we're looking at investing in the schools, it's worth the risk to kind of take a look at and have to come back at some point if we have to.
And I'm really concerned about the, the possible cuts to elementary. If I look it up there, it says reduction of three, three teachers to two teachers for second grade, which takes you to the twenty-two student AOE guideline. Again, same concern as Kathy and Liz. It's a very high-needs population, twenty-two kids is a lot. I also was trying to understand why the AOE guideline is twenty-two students at Flynn and twenty-five at Smith.
Different age groups.
Oh, it's not all K to five?
No.
Okay, okay. So Smith goes up to five, up to fifth grade.
Well, that particular class is a fifth grade and the other, the other was a second grade, so it's a K to grade.
So I, I really am hesitant to, to think about cutting in the elementary grades. I'm also very hesitant about the two hundred and ten thousand dollar middle school cuts. I'd need to know more about that. Oh, what was that one?
There was no reductions in middle school.
Oh, what, the two hundred and ten thousand?
That was the elementary.
No, sorry, two, I'm concerned about the zero. No, what was the two hundred and ten thousand cuts?
That was, that's just the, the aggregate value of, nope. That's the aggregate value of the three elementary positions.
So same thing, sorry about that.
Yep.
When, you, the definition of interventionists, so if you talk about eliminating eight, say, interventionists, I don't understand what that means. I do understand what it would mean if you said eight classroom teachers. I, I, I can understand that. But interventionists, are they, are library specialists that we talked about last year being interventionists?
So the, I'm not sure what the definition was defined when they established the positions. Because as I said, they do function differently in different schools. We currently have... We currently have 12.
Math, read.
Math and literacy, let's say. So two in each of the elementary schools. And each school has kind of used them slightly differently to meet their needs, right? So some schools are doing small.
Coaches.
Yeah, you could call them coaches.
But it's a different, coaches are more about.
They're, it's, this conversation is the problem, to be honest with you. Because when I talk to different people, they have different interpretations. And one of the things we need to do beside the budget is to have some consistency around practice and what we're doing. And that's why I said, that's a challenge we'd be dealing with regardless, right? And so the proposal was to move them from 12 to six. Not to get rid of them entirely, but to move them to six. At the same time, we can repurpose to ensure that we're targeting the strategies that we want to be targeted for the achievement gap. So that was the proposal, right? And my response around the, what, around the classroom is that removing them does not change the classroom ratios that we've established that we want to maintain. It's not like pulling a core homeroom teacher out. Now you're gonna have 25 kids as opposed to 20 kids because it's an additional resource, right?
But it impacts the services to students.
We could debate about that. Because I could talk about how we would do it differently to increase the services. That's what I'm saying, it's just a philosophical conversation, so.
So then the other.
This would be your last one?
My last question. When you talk about wanting, looking for consistency with the interventionists, I know that we're working on, the teachers are working on responsive classroom, MTSS, multiple tiers of support, of student support, restorative practice. Is there, you know, you can't do everything. Is there a movement to focus on one?
Yes.
And. Okay. And teach.
What you're saying is absolutely right, and that's what I'm trying to say. So what happens in education, what happens here as well too, is we start responsive classrooms, we start PBIS, we start all these initiatives, and we keep, and they're all good. And some people hold on to them and we add on and we add on. But you can't do all those things to the level that you, so you need to at some point say, you know what? That's good, but we're gonna stop doing that and we're all gonna get in the pool and we're all doing the same thing, we're all gonna focus on. That's the only way we're gonna see achievement. If we're consistent around focusing on those high-yield strategies that we believe are gonna work. Yes, you're gonna get educators who are gonna say, well, I've been doing this and I think that works. Yes, it all works, but we need to be consistent around doing those pieces. And we're not there yet, right? And so we want, we need to move to that, right?
So my only, my main point is no cutting services that are gonna impact students. But there's a lot of discussion about that, I understand.
So I'm not gonna revisit the same territory others have. I have concerns about the elementary reductions, so I'll just leave that at that. Others have sort of expressed what I also was feeling when you were presenting that. The thing that I'm really sort of almost angry about is the lack of movement on the city's ability to help us in this time of like financial crisis really in the district. You know, we got a million and a half dollars of pilot money, not because the city wanted to, but because it's part of our city charter. It says that the city has to give that money to the schools. And the only problem we've had is AOE has said, well, you can't use it for, well, there's a statute that says we can't use it for educational expenses. So we found hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of money, of expenses that can be, that are non-educational in nature, that are not educational in nature, that the city should be helping us pay for. And we've identified them. We've even picked, we've even picked one that they're already paying for. So AOE has already given this one the blessing. And we've asked for $275,000 more to support school, after-school recreational activities. And what they're already giving us, like what, like 250,000?
200.
So 200. So they could give us this without any AOE objection. And that would pay for the three elementary reductions that you've outlined and give us $60,000 more. They could also pay for the early education assessment person for $60,000 that we had proposed to them in May. And this would, this is right in the same sort of programmatic spirit as the mayor's early learning initiative, right? To identify those kids and give them the best supports they need before they get into school. So I'm not sure why they're offering up a meager $30,000 and 16K for additional transportation. It's just baffling to me. But that's, so that's more of a, I guess, a comment and a rant than a question. The last thing, then also staying on like the revenue side of things. You had mentioned that there are social workers, social workers in summer school that are going to be funded through alternative sources. And could you elaborate a little bit more about the?
No, it's another.
No, they aren't these. Back in one of the earlier slides.
Right, these were kind of modifications we made to our proposed enhancements. So for example, with the social workers, there you go. We think we can use some of our Medicaid reimbursement money to increase that support. That is, so that takes, that relieves the general fund of the pressure of doing that. It obviously taxes that funding source further, and that's something that is of some concern to me. But you know, we're not looking at a lot of good choices here. We're just looking at choices. And so that is one of the things that I think, I think we can pull it off, you know? And if we find out that we can't, we will learn, we will learn that lesson. But I think we're okay for, to shift that funding to that particular source. And the summer school, that again is, so it's kind of connected to what we were just talking about. To the extent that we are able to get some increased funding from the city. Yeah, it was modest, but we can use that. Reduces the burden on some of these programs, which we can then kind of backfill, so to speak, with their existing funds. So it just means that we don't need to increase our general fund use for that. And just go forward here. Achievement gap, so both the first two options here are, as Yau mentioned, possible grant sources. We're looking at opportunities to use some one-time funds in, to do the professional development that we're seeking to do. So it doesn't create, unfortunately, an ongoing source for that. But we think we can still make that investment without actually needing to put that on the general fund, even though it means that we won't necessarily have that available to us in the subsequent year to do, which is something we would have to think about, how we kind of make that sustainable in the long run. And, yep, and I mentioned getting partial grant support for the position there, which would, we're just estimating that would kind of cut the cost to the general fund in half.
Commissioner Obrola's rant. And I want to return to the elementary school issue to also co-sign what many other people have already said, but maybe to say a little bit more about what I, I feel like I cannot walk out of this meeting and persuade anybody about the value of this segment of the presentation. Although I will say, one thing that I'm actually quite pleased about is the idea of creating more flexibility in physical education pathways at the high school. And I wish that would be extended to the middle school. I have many opinions about physical education. And I think it's peculiar that there's an area of required education that forces students to have to change their clothes in front of their peers. I don't think we should be doing that. And so I think for all kinds of reasons that more flexibility in that pathway is actually a great idea absent the, you know, even outside of the context of seeking budget reductions. And with all due respect to the excellent PE teachers my child has had over time, they've been some of her favorite teachers. But on the elementary level, what is missing for me is a sense of the planning for elementary instruction that this budget envisions. Like right now, we're looking at a budget presentation that's primary purpose is to pick out reductions that can be applied to a budget problem. And that's obviously an important way of thinking about this. But another way that we can think about budgeting is it's planning for future years' activities. And you know, just as the suggestion that we could create more flexible pathways on the PE side lets me envision various ways in which students at the high school could approach their learning and demonstration of learning in that respect. I don't have a good sense of how this budget would make things different in the elementary school level, except that it's easy to imagine somewhat alarming outcomes. We've heard a lot about the, both the physical environment and the, just the adult-kid ratios in elementary schools over the past couple of years. And I can't tell from the way this presentation is structured in terms of the shifts in the interventionists, the additions of, I realize we're making investments in special ed and, well, I guess the social work additions are at the middle school, right? I mean, so I know there's investments in things that are some of the areas that we've heard concerns about in the elementary school. But I can't see from the way they're described here how to tell a story about what's the future that's being envisioned for the elementary schools. And I think that's what's missing. I get why this presentation is the way it is for tonight. But I think that's what I would need to feel comfortable with these proposed reductions. Because just on the face of it, it does seem a little scary.
I agree with Commissioner Harrington. And I'm pretty much everything everyone has said. I am concerned about the elementary cuts. I would see that sort of as an absolute last resort, not to go there quite yet. But I do understand that, I like the fact that there's, there are numbers behind it. And I'm curious to see, again, how, how these people would be reassigned somewhere else and how we can make sure we have enough adults in the places where we need them. And yeah, I'm, the city not finding ways to return that pilot money to us, even though we did the work of finding them and not agreeing to them is infuriating. I'm fairly disgusted by that. So, and then I guess, I'm assuming that you've talked to, to building administrators about the various cuts. And I'm just curious how, how the administrators feel these are gonna work and play out. And that's it.
Yau and Nathan, forgive me, I have a bit of a cold. You've done obviously very hard work here under some difficult circumstances, and thank you. I appreciate that. You've come back with more reductions in current spending than I had anticipated. If we as a board were going to keep the tax rate down, I was expecting more cuts to the speculative or the enhancements. You've also found other sources for some of those. I think I'd be a little more comfortable with dialing back on some of the enhancements. I don't want to draw the lines right now, but I'd be happy to discuss. And I'm no expert. But I am concerned about the direct instruction cuts. The interventionists, they, they're licensed teachers, correct? Because they provide direct instructions to students that actually, you know, synthetically create slightly lower class sizes every time they are able to provide their services to, especially the students in need. You may have another plan for them. I will be the first to believe and say and admit that our achievement gap plan is in its early stages. It's very much in a gestation PowerPoint stage. So I'm less comfortable with some of the enhancements crowding out some of the block and tackle duties of a school district, which is to make sure we've got, you know, those low class size ratios and high-quality teachers. And for example, I think the AOE guidelines are maximums, right? Yeah.
They talk about over a range that you shouldn't be above those levels.
And you've given the maximum number, right?
We've said we're still within those, even if we make these changes.
But when you quote a number, it's the maximum, I just want.
That is the guideline, yeah.
The, it's a 22 and 25, and our ratio with the reductions is 19.9.
Yeah.
So that's, I think that's well within.
So philosophically, I'd like us to dial, to attempt to dial back on some of the, what I'll call more speculative enhancements we've got in the three pillars, rather than cut deeper into direct instruction. I also want to touch upon, I have a question actually. How much does BHS Alpine skiing and BHS golf cost us? I just want to understand what that's gonna save us.
That would be kind of between a $10,000 and $20,000 when you factor in the pay to the coaches, all the fees that are associated with the sports and the transportation associated with it.
Both programs?
Yeah, all together.
So cutting both programs, you're saving 10 to 20 grand to eliminate those two sports.
Yep.
I'm just gonna put it out there, I'm not in favor of that trade-off relative to some of the speculative. I do believe there is and will be a time for some of these enhancements. But I think when you cut a sport, and I know there's difference in the community, and how did you select those two sports versus, say, football?
For a couple of different reasons. One, that the participants in those sports can still participate in state meets, you know, like a ski meet or golf tournament, without having to have actually a whole team that's fielded and having a coach and that sort of thing. So there's, you can actually participate as an individual anyway. And the second thing was, in the conversations that we've had in the past with the high school, is that those tend not, those tend to be sports where the participants don't come from as broad of a cross-section of our community. And so it tends to be just kind of a narrower segment of our population. And we felt like that's not as, you know, you made a point last time about sports being an equalizer for students. And so on the, in terms of the list of sports we had, those were not seen as furthering kind of that end to the same extent as other sports.
What segment of the community is that, Nathan?
Students that don't have the same socioeconomic opportunities that, that many of the, you know, that many of the people do who are able to participate in Alpine, skiing, and in golf.
Meaning the Alpine and the golf kids tend to be the middle-class kids?
Well, no, actually, the, what we heard from the schools is that those students often participate in those activities outside of school already, in terms of they do go skiing and practice on their own, they do go golfing, as opposed to some of the other activities where the only access they have is within school. Right, so that was a lever in terms of, those students are still gonna be, have an opportunity, still can go to the competitions. They can still participate in that. And they still go and play on the weekends and ski on the weekends, and they can still go to those competitions as well.
So I do hope those kids will obviously find other BHS sports because there's a big difference in just still being able to recreationally ski.
No, they can still compete. They can still go to the competitions. They can still leave and go to the competition.
Right, without a team, the likelihood of that happening is.
It happens in other parts of Vermont. It's been discussed before at a board.
So Liz, I think, I've kind of got some time here, but there is a tendency on your part and others to interrupt me in particular. But thank you. I would like you to reconsider the elimination of those sports. I think it's a bit short-sighted relative to, and I know these are all hard choices, and I will be the first to admit that. I'm also concerned because what I've heard at the high school is it is challenging to get your PE credits. And if it is true legally that we can in fact give you credit for playing on a sport, it's my understanding that that has not been something that's yet blessed. But is that legal?
Yeah, Champlain Valley does it, they've been doing it for years.
We can do it.
Yep.
Great, I think we should. Because I've heard from more and more BHS students saying, I'm having such a hard time fulfilling my gym credit. And so I was just a little concerned when I heard that. Because again, that's direct student instruction that makes it, makes scheduling harder, which has been a problem. So thank you. I'm concerned about everything plus what we just discussed.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure I'm fully understanding the budget impact slide. So the presentation tonight, the, yeah, yes, this one. So the negative $145,000, yeah, $145,000 is a result of all of those investments minus all the reductions. So all the investments we showed on the, in the initial presentation. And was there anything removed from those investments that wasn't highlighted? Like a full-line item? No.
No.
So anything, everything was.
Anything that was yellowed, that we kept it on the list.
Was different from last meeting?
Yes, we kept it on.
But nothing came off of it that, nothing came off of those slides?
Nothing disappeared and couldn't be yellowed.
That just wasn't highlighted, yeah?
No.
Okay. So I would. So I, I, I would, I think I'd, I'd agree with Jeff that I would, I think, like to see a better balance between where we're pulling out, between investments and some of the reductions in, that, that were presented in this presentation. And generally, I mean, I just don't, I'm not comfortable with the elementary school reductions in general. I think I can, I'd, I'd like to hear more about the BHS ones, but I, I just feel like the class sizes that we would get to in those three instances in those schools are outside of my comfort level. And for the interventionists, I mean, I, I'm trying to understand fully, Yao, I, I agree that there's, we really need to take a systemic approach in how we implement those resources. Is you, in your mind, will we come back in two years and ask for those resources back because we've built a system that you're, that is, that, that wor, that you think works and can be, that we can have confidence in, that it's being implemented across the district in an efficient and equitable way? So is it the, is it the system that's the problem, or is it the resources? And so like, I don't want to, I don't want to reduce resources when we can have a systems conversation around how to marshal those resources forward and, and not lose some potential impact on kids that we might, if we decide because the system doesn't work right now, or isn't up to, up to our liking, that, that we, we take some of those resources away and then come back later to add them?
Well, it's a good question, and I would say, look at the data. We're not achieving. And you know what? The, the, the two schools, Asay and I, you've talked about, that have the most needs. We're in the, what, ninth year of magnet schools? Achievement hasn't changed, has not changed. It has not changed. Look at what we're doing to our kids, it has not changed. We need to make a strategic move. I can come here and put things up, and you can say, "No, we're not comfortable with this," and I can do that as your superintendent, and I will do that, that's what the board wants me to do. But if you actually want to see change, you need to allow us to make the hard choices and move the district forward. We can't say we're going to, oh, we can't hurt this because we're going to leave it there, and then we sit back. That's actually more detrimental than going forward. We haven't seen change over several years, we need to do something different. When are we going to do it? When are we going to do it? I don't know when we're going to do it, I want to do it now. But I take direction from the board. I presented you with information and a balance in terms of trying to sustain some of the things we have, at the same time looking at where we're going. Obviously, we can't change everything overnight, that's not going to happen. But these are opportunities for us to gradually start to implement the change we need to make happen. And what I'm saying as your superintendent is, these are the resources that we need to make that change. If you feel that that's not the right direction, it's your privilege to say, "That's not the right direction, this, this is where we're going to go." But all I can do is bring forth my recommendation based on our analysis, right? And I think that we go around these circles and we have the conferences, I know this is a political sort of conversation, and that's your bailiwick, dealing with the politics, and you're going to have a range of, of input from community members in terms of what they feel around what we should be doing, what we shouldn't be doing. I'm going to continue to be consistent and give you my analysis and say, "This is what I think we need to do, this is what I think I need to do in order to move on, this is how far we can go." We started out talking about the reductions to central office, we gave $540,000 from central office. We're continuously reducing. Our staff are challenged with what we have, we're supporting them, but at the same time they're saying, "Okay, we know we need to do something." We're saying, "Okay, trust us, because we're going to take that money and we're going to reinvest it." If I have to go back and say, "You know what, you did your part, you gave a half a million dollars, no one else is willing to look at doing things differently, because everyone's comfortable to where we are at, and you look at our data, we're not in a place that I'm proud of." I don't want to be the one that says, "I've been here for several years and we've not moved the achievement of all of our students not an inch." Look at your, go back and look at the data, pre-magnet schools, current magnet schools, and years going forward. There hasn't been any change at all, nothing significantly. So I will defer to whatever the board wants us to do, but those are my thoughts and that's our analysis, right? We've spent countless hours trying to find a way to keep the balance, right? We've spent, you do not believe the amount of hours we've spent trying to find a balance, at the same time trying to achieve the goals that the board has set, set out for us. We're not going to meet those targets, we won't meet those targets in going, in going in this direction. We can move along, we can make everyone happy and do what we need to do, and that's fine. I'm not going to be comfortable with that, but I'll do what the, the board...
I think we have a good discussion.
Okay.
If the chair could please facilitate a discussion?
If you could go back to the elementary school slides. So what I'd like to know on this, and I know you guys can't give it to me now, so maybe for the next meeting, right? Not every grade is exactly alike, all right? And you have cohorts moving through these schools that may have different needs. And I don't think, and I know you don't, I know you don't look at, okay, that school, everybody's the same, we're going to do, we're going to provide this because of a student population this big, right? I think we, I know you fine-tune that down to the actual need that's taking place in the cohort class that's going through, or a single class that's going through, could have higher needs than some other classes. So what I'd like to see on this is, the scenarios, and I, and I got to agree that the, the original, the class sizes as they exist now, 15 to 1, seem small, all right? But that's not knowing what the class size, what the class needs are, right? So right now you have three teachers serving 44 students, you have four teachers serving 60 students, you have three teachers serving 46. So around 15 to 1. That's, that does sound small, but I don't, again, I don't know what that class is. So my question for you to come back to us would be, going to 20, or 21, or 22, or 23, or, you know, or, or higher, and I understand with the higher grades, where we're going, you know, when you get into the fifth grade, you've got an AOE guideline that's higher, and we talked about this a couple of years ago, where you thought, where you, we really wanted to spin the class sizes around to where the smaller class sizes were down in the elementary grades, and the larger class sizes ended up where students could handle them at an older age, right? What I'd like to see on this is, I'd like to see you come back and say, "This is how, these are the, this is your equity lens on this," right? So if we do go to, in second grade, 22 students at Flynn, what does that, what does that first grade this year look like when it comes into second grade? Does that still hold with the equity lens on it? Or is it, you know, is this, is it an extraordinary good class where we wouldn't have to worry about it? Or is it another class that we'd have to say, "Yeez, you know what, we have to make sure that we're going to go ahead and reallocate an interventionist over there to help that class at certain times of the day during certain studies." So I just want to make sure we fine-tune, we fine-tune down to those cohorts on these things. Just so I get a, I would feel more comfortable with this, because I know this, you know, going from 15 to a teacher to, to 22 is a, is a, may, seems like quite a jump. I mean, that, that's without realizing what else would be behind those students, and specifically what that class looks like. Because I'd like to see this happen every year. Just because this class is holding here now, nothing to say that next year when this budget comes around, that you wouldn't say, "You know what, we really have to break this class down, because we have a cohort coming through that's high need." All right, so, thank you, go ahead.
So, I want to say a few things. One is around the elementary teacher superintendent of bank. It's very clear to me that you have developed an analytical mechanism that is very sound and that is much more in-depth than I've ever seen in this school district. And I have to trust that you have some thinking behind this, and I would just say to you, the board would need to hear more from you about why this is not as worrisome as our, our reaction is to it, and that would be helpful. I, I want to also just briefly refer to the interventionists and your, the general thrust of your comments. You are very calm and measured, and this is the first time I've seen this much passion from you, and I really get that you want to move this ship. And I, I've been thinking a lot about this, in fact, one of my neighbors who I was talking to about this is that, that changing a system is very hard, and that's essentially what we're trying to do, to target resources in a different way to meet the needs of all of our students. And I, I want to just remind my fellow board members of the presentation that was done last week by the achievement gap team, which you see the extraordinary gap between free and reduced lunch kids and non-free and reduced lunch kids and their achievement. So I, I want to commend you for doing the hard work. This is, this is not anything that's going to win anybody a popularity contest, and you have exactly identified that inertia is, is, is deep. And so I, I want to just tell you that I support you in doing this. You have done this analytically in a way that I think is very sound, and I think we have to, we have to say to ourselves that we are turning the Titanic, and it takes, it takes time to do that, and waiting is not going to get us anywhere. And in the meantime, in the meantime, we have kids every year who drop out of school and kids whose, whose economic futures are compromised permanently as a result of our failure. I think we have to, I, I, I have, what I have asked of the superintendent is to have a data-driven approach, and that's exactly what we have. And I, I, I think that you have done a great job of justifying this, and I had a conversation with the superintendent over the last few days about this, and what he said to me was that he would not present any budget cuts that he thought would in any way compromise the quality of the education of students here. And I, I take you at your word for that. I want to refer then now to the issue of the interventionists, because I know that raised some hackles. I have been at institutions, and in my current institution, in which when we grow, we sometimes hire people and we don't really carefully think about it strategically. There have been moments when we've been forced to cut that has made us much more efficient in our thinking, and, and when we do it with a strategic plan with clear goals in mind, you can do with somewhat less and yet achieve more, because you have put the right people in the right places. So I really encourage us all not to think that just because some positions might no longer be there, it does not mean that we're going to meet our strategic goals. And as I, if, if, I want to just check with you, that my, is my understanding around the interventionists, is that they weren't well-targeted to meet the, the, the goals that we were trying to achieve, and we could actually do more with less. My two cents.
First of all, I apologize for my emotional outbursts, but I can't promise it won't happen again, but I do want to thank you for your comments. I, I do take this to heart, this is not just a job, and so when I do feel strongly about the actions we're taking, and I did mean it, that my intentions are not to diminish the, the district and the classrooms, my intentions are to improve it. Who doesn't want to see success? So as I was, I was truthful, and I said, "I'm not going to present anything I'm not comfortable with, that I think, oh, we're going to really have a, you know, go, go down the, the hill with this." And so I feel confident in that. But as I said, we've done the work and hopefully given you enough analysis for you to think about, you know, what direction you want us to, to send us in, and we'll do that.
So Yao, can you give us the studies behind these so that we understand?
Commissioner Curry? So, yeah, I mean, I think that what I am, was caught off-guard by is, I appreciate and respect your passion by all means. It's, I was just a little tripped up by the timing, because my understanding was that we were going to go around and just make comments and then have time to get into questions. And so my first overall question would be that, you know, first, not all the boards sits on the diversity and equity committee, and so we, we are not privy, this is the disconnect, we are not privy to the kind of in-depth data dive you guys have been doing, and we have not been brought along with that information. And so I think there's a gap in different board members' understanding of the strategies and the challenges that have been discussed at a deeper level. So the presentation we saw last week was an overview, it was very exciting and very promising, and I'm absolutely on board with the fact that the data has not changed since, I've been on the board since we've been talking about this, really since the diversity and equity task force delivered its report in 2012. There were a lot of buckshot approaches to dealing with the achievement gap and equity and, and all these issues. So I appreciate that you're trying to systematize that, and I, I totally understand how difficult that is and that you want to move faster, and this is all intended to do that. What, what I believe I need, like Susan said, is I'm missing, like, so I'm here, and some people are here, and I need to be brought along in exactly how the resources would be allocated, and especially after, you know, hearing the other narrative from the teachers in the classroom of how difficult it is to manage the classrooms that have the high-need students, and just hearing over and over the trauma behaviors and, you know, having a whole period disrupted by one kid, and those stories that are more common now than they were when I got on the board. You know, I just need to understand what's going to change in those classrooms, if anything, and how this is not going to worsen the situation, and where the money is going to go in that systematic way that we need to move the needle and support the teachers in getting there.
Commissioner Justin?
Your show of passion made me realize that we're looking at this through, many of us, I am looking at this from a very narrow lens, and what I need to know, and maybe this is, maybe the discussion will bring this out, is how is it going to look differently?
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Barlow?
Um, just to go back, I had a, I had a list like everybody did, and some of the stuff that I didn't think was as critical, I just sort of deferred, but I'm going to ask one of these, those ones now. So with, with the student ratios, the staff-to-student ratios you discussed with us, I mean, there's been some talk out of Montpelier that that will be a criteria maybe for some cost containment measures in the upcoming session. Do we think that our staff-to-student ratios are higher than most districts or about the same? Do we have, do we have any data on that? And if they are higher, do, do you think that that insulates us from some of the potential harmful effects of legislation that we don't know about yet, but we suspect might contain costs by subjecting us to certain restrictions around, around our, our ratios? Does it make sense?
I think it's impossible to know right now. You know, what, I don't know, we don't know what to expect legislatively, and we don't know when to expect it. So we can certainly hope that we're in a position to not be forced to make any dramatic changes from whatever we decide to do right now, but we saw last year that that wasn't the case. So, you know, I wouldn't want to have to try to predict what the ultimate outcome's going to be, other than that we know that that's been a topic of conversation and hence our reference to it here.
We've been, we've been kind of sort of gauging ourselves for something to happen, right? Because at some point along the way, because the, some of the, the memos and things that have come out from the state have shown, you know, five to one for the state of Vermont, and I think they, we're one of the lowest ratios in the country or something like that, so people believe that there is opportunities here. So I wouldn't be surprised at some point that they come forward with. And that's why we wanted to kind of show what our ratios are currently, what our ratios are, right? We're within the standards, and probably someone who's taken a really conservative look at our numbers and our, the state numbers would probably direct us to reduce that, right? Say, "You've got some fat there, you can still reduce some dollars." So we've been preparing just in case that happens, right? If it doesn't happen now, it's going to, it could happen, because all the signs and all the signals have been that something's going to change in terms of... all the signals have been that something's going to change in terms of doing that, right? And at that point, it will be not as much in our control, but just slice and dice, and there's no opportunity to look at, okay, how do we reallocate? It's just going to be, right?
Commissioner Curry. Do you have any more questions? Come on.
I mean, I do have questions, but I, I thought we were going to, I mean, how are we going to do this? Are we able? I have a bunch more questions, but can we hear, I think that most, is everybody in agreement that the, one of the biggest questions is about the reallocation of the elementary school resources? I mean, can we hear a response on that?
Yeah, we can talk about, see, so one of the, in order to capture these things that we heard from the board, you wanted to maintain these, in these areas that were identified, we had to find reductions and reallocations, right? So for instance, I know Susan Marie said this a few times around the social-emotional supports at elementary, right? So we definitely have under this area, all these resources are going to be targeted towards those, those, those schools. And in this particular one, especially, sorry, special education supports, I know Laura's been talking about how she develops behavior coaches to help the schools, because the behavior is a challenge for us at the elementaries. We do not have the resources to say we're going to add an additional behavior teacher for every school, or, we don't have, we don't have, we don't have that in terms of being able to do that at this point. So we have to do it incrementally, right? So what resources we capture, we'll be able to repurpose back into the social-emotional challenges that we have in our schools. So that's reflected in the investments that we, we have here. That was one of the areas that we, we had at the outset in terms of, am I going the right way? Yeah, we talked about increased social-emotional support, so we know that's a need. All our schools are talking about it, right? So that needs to come in many levels, from the training we give to staff in terms of being able to deal with that, restore their practices, and actually putting in staff that have expertise to coach other staff, right? The, the, the usual fix that people ask for to deal with that is, give me more bodies to take care of those kids. That's a short-term fix. I can throw somebody in there, so now you can deal with this, but we need to change the structure so we can actually have people who have the de-escalation strategies and some of the backgrounds to work with it, and then have ways to displace students in the short term to support them, to, to move forward. We've talked about developing a program for alternative to suspensions for students who are having challenges in schools. How do we keep, you know, education while that happens? I didn't bring that forward this, at this point, because we just couldn't, in terms of financially and finding space and all the other variables, but it's something we need to do. We've got to move to that, because we need to continue that education for those kids and be able to keep them engaged at some level, right? It just reinforces the behavior, the way we're doing it currently. So that's how we've been looking at it in terms of doing that. And I think we've, we've kind of given a balance to the board in terms of which direction you want to go, because you can go and look at the investments and say, hmm, reduce those investments in, in lieu of limiting reductions, or you could go the other way and say, we actually need more investments, you need to look harder on the reductions, or you could say, you know what, we're happy with this, we're going to increase the whole thing, right? But I think that's for you at this point to kind of think about.
So I'm still not clear, I feel like, I still feel like I don't have the story that Susan Marie was referring to. We're looking at $700,000 in cuts between interventionists and full-time. How is the $700,000 going to be reallocated and deployed in the elementary schools or across the district to mitigate the fear that comes up, I think probably most immediately for the elementary school teachers? And then how are those, how are those alternative approaches going to be introduced? I just feel like I really need more details on what this is going to look like. What do the classrooms look like now? What are the classrooms going to look like? And for those interventionists that, you know, I understand you're saying there's not really data that's showing that they are closing the achievement gap. Personally, one of my, my son was one of the kids who had a breakout, he wasn't reading at a third-grade level, he had a breakout, and it was successful, so it's a little clouded, you know, my perception is clouded by the success of that group, so I'm just kind of like, okay, well, I saw it work. If you tell me it's not working across the district, I believe you. I'm just looking for, you know, if that interventionist hadn't been there for my kid and his five classmates, what would it look like now?
Right. And I, so let me make sure I'm clear on this. I'm not saying the interventionists, that what they're doing in our schools isn't having an impact on students, because I know they are doing it. What I'm saying, first of all, is they're all doing slightly different things and doing it, and doing it differently.
I understand, I'm just hearing that you're going to eliminate six of them.
Right.
And I'm curious about where the $420,000 is going to go that's going to mitigate that, and we're still going to be able to deliver, you know, intervention.
Well, as I said earlier, part of it goes into the pot to support the things that the schools have said, sorry, where am I? These investment items, right? And the other strategy around repurposing the interventionists to, for the lead piece, and I've had conversations with curriculum director and our student support services person, that the role for the six remaining can have a more inclusive role around looking at behavior supports as well as academic supports, which we don't do right now. So that's how we could change the role to support some of that, that Susan Marie was addressing around the issues that we're having in elementaries, because that's a need that we have. We've already talked about increasing special education supports, and Laura's talked about using those dollars to develop behavior coaches that can work with our, our elementary schools to give those supports, because that's a need that we have. And we have a number of strategy, capacity-building strategies under this that's going to build the capacity of our staff to be able to address those areas a little bit better moving forward, right?
Oh, Commissioner Kleeman.
I just want to say thank you for doing this, and I trust you. That's all.
Commissioner Harrington.
Yes, yes, also, thank you. I also trust you, I also have the, you know, need to translate this, and, and so I guess I'll briefly repeat myself, but with the exception of the savings of money with flexible pathways for gym, which I feel like I can totally sell, the, I, I still think, maybe one thing I hope happens at our next meeting is having more of a sense from you of that story about what things would look like. Once upon a time, in the past three years, I guess in my first two years on the board, the curriculum committee heard a presentation from, from Stephanie Phillips and some teachers who were both coaches and interventionists, who talked about the data walls that they were developing at, I think it was Flynn, we saw an example of their data wall, which was their example of how at the time they were reviewing data on the classroom level and beginning, I think this was in early days of the interventionist, and, no, it was academic.
It was behavior, oh, the coaches.
No, it was academic, it was academic stuff, not, not the behavioral stuff. And so that was, you know, one presentation about one school, but at least it did give me a bit of an insight in that moment about what was going on in some kinds of professional conversations in the, in the schools. I, as a parent, I always thought the faculty learning community thing, it first appeared to me to be somewhat of a peculiar inconvenience in the way it screwed up the regular schedule for the week, but my Girl Scout troop used to meet in, at Champlain, and so as I was walking through the teacher planning room on the way to getting my Girl Scout thing set up, I could always see the big post-it notes that they had on the boards at Champlain, and I got to see, oh, these are some of the kinds of big questions that they're considering. Or as I was going through the library, I could see the teachers in their breakout groups and think, oh, that is amazingly cool that you are looking at this kind of data today or, or thinking about these kinds of things. And so, because I happened to be in the school at a particular moment in time, it gave me, I mean, at that point I was not on the board yet, but it was more of a private story to myself about, oh, that is why this institutional change is, is, is paying off. So I, I will be more than happy to give you more feedback about, or, you know, argue amongst us as a board about how, how do we want to weight the balance of reallocations, and, and also I think the issue of what's the final number we want to aim at is also something that we need to talk about, and that's a political question aside from all of this other stuff. But I really do feel like I need more of a sense from you first to inform me better about what some of these things would really mean in practice and how they would pay off. Because I do think that, you know, shifting to a systemic approach is what's important to change things, and educating everybody on the fact that change is possible, so that we don't just shrug and say, well, what can you do? Poor performance is caused by so many factors, what can we do? And so I, I appreciate the hope, I appreciate the systemic direction, and I know that there's underlying informed practices underneath that, but I feel like I can't quite give you direction, or at least argue about direction just yet, or come to a, how do we negotiate all of these different views we're hearing amongst us on the board without a, more of a sense from you about what some of that would look like? So this question doesn't come from a lack of trust, it's more about how do we move from where we are now to being able to turn around and, and explain whatever choice we come to.
Right. Commissioner Barlow.
So I really would like you to tell us what are the studies that you're using to back this stuff up, because I have just lately read at least six articles and heard two This American Lives on
Love that show.
The, the increased socioeconomic segregation and color segregation of our schools. But I just read one article that actually said that the socioeconomic segregation of schools is worse to all children, including children of color. They get a double whammy for being in high-poverty schools and schools that are segregated. So I, I guess, I, it doesn't surprise me in some way that, that our schools down in the old North End and some new North End aren't changing, because they have 81-plus percent free and reduced lunch, and, and I think that as long as our city schools are segregated on socioeconomic lines, we're going to have a hard time changing those schools. It's not that those kids can't learn, they can learn, it's just that they have so much other baggage they bring with them into that classroom that I just feel like, until we really start looking at the socioeconomics of this whole district, we aren't going to see huge changes. And, and, and I guess that's because I've read all these articles, I really want to hear from you what it is that you're saying is, is going to change this, and maybe I'm just seeing those articles and not other articles.
That's okay with me. So I agree with most everybody that was talking about this, I just need to hear the story, right? So John Doe and, or Jane Doe in fourth grade right now, about to go into fifth grade, how big is their, what's the, what's the class size now, right? We know that they were targeted to go into 15 to one, right? And what's that, what's that impact? So what does that student look like once they get into class with, you know, are their supports that, you know, how do we provide support on a bigger class, right? But it's a, you know, how does the things that we're making investments on cradle that child to, again, for success? So we try to necessarily minimize, actually go beyond minimizing the impact of a larger class to where they would get a little bit more individualization. Instead, we need to actually do better than that, right? So what the kid would have gone into, I'd like to see us do better than that, even with a bigger class. So is that possible? And I ask you to be creative, you know what? We have a lot of schools, we have shifting populations, we have, you know, at least come back to us and say, you know what, if we did this with the six interventionists, if we had, if we lined them up, are they spread evenly now to where maybe they should be focal, focused on to those higher-needs schools? How's that equity lens looks like, you know, when you're increasing the size of a class on a high-need school, how does that, where do, where does that equity lens come into it to mitigate that impact? So I just ask that when we come back, that you have that story for me. Commissioner Seguino.
A couple of things. One is Commissioner Olwell's comments with regard to the research and so forth. I, as I understood the superintendent's comment, the fact was that we have integrated our magnet schools socio-economically, and we still are not seeing progress. So what I'm hearing from fellow commissioners is, is maybe some more specifics on what you have identified, why you think it'll work. So as an example, I mean, I, I, Commissioner Curry and I have talked about this as well, and Commissioner Olwell, that the magnet schools, the idea was to socio-economically integrate, and you have argued that there has not been any progress made, and I think the question would be, how does the budget you've proposed us attempt to deal with that? In what way specifically can you link the items in the budget to those changes you want to see? And I'll just give you one other example, and I, so I, I, let me, let me give you one other example. So one might also ask, for example, how does the Spacemaker proposal meet our goals better than the six interventionists that you'd like to, to do away with, right? So I think if you could make those linkages with us, that would, that would help a great deal. I don't think anybody on the board here tonight has talked about the issue around the percentage increase, but I, I want to just say that I think that 7% is something I could certainly live with, and if we were able to tell a clear story about how these specific expenditures will lead us to the goals that we have, and how the reductions will not, not deter us from those goals, in, in more specific detail, I think that would help all of us.
Commissioner McLaren.
I think Stephanie articulated exactly what I was thinking in a much better way than I possibly could, and I just would like to, at least from my perspective, empower you to ask for the things that you think you need to build that vision to attaining the student's success. And I understand we're in a tough budget climate, but if repurposing some of those FTEs as opposed to reducing them is something that you see as beneficial to meeting those goals sooner, I, I would at least like to see what that looks like, and really encourage you to, to not be afraid to at least ask and talk about those things. And in my mind, I, I'd like to be able to communicate about potential reductions in staffing in a way that sees them as a, setting us on a path towards that, towards your vision, as opposed to reductions to, in, in order to, for reduction's sake, to, to sort of minimize the impact of what we need to do to, to make sure we're on that path.
Commissioner Curry.
I have some other questions just in general of budget. I'm just curious about the, the Library Maker Space pilot, which school that's in, and is it 100% grant funds? That's one of my questions.
It's in Edmonds, and it's not that the project is 100% grant funds, we're saying we would be making a $75,000 one-time investment to do that work. The group at the school with support from some of the community members have put forth a proposal that represents the work that they've done, including work supported with grant funding and in-kind contributions to that, so.
That's Edmonds Middle School?
Yes.
That's where it would happen? And what, what does a MicroSpace do? I'm like, you know, one of those generationally ignorant people who doesn't actually, I've like been in a MakerSpace, but I'm not really sure what schools do in a MakerSpace.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, in, in essence, it's what it, what it sounds like. It's about, but, you know, there's a lot of different tools. Like a popular example that, that we've added in some schools where we've tried to kind of do this on the cheap, so to speak, is like you get, you can get things like 3D printers and other technological tools like that, that allow students to be making things.
that allow students to be making things in an instructional setting. And so it's one of those, like you said, it's kind of a term of art, so to speak. But it's, you don't have to overthink it in that sense, but it is.
What academic skills is it doing?
Ah, okay.
Not to sound like a Catholic, I'm sorry, not to sound like a, you know, a Jew, sorry, my bad. What academic skills?
Right. Well, it is a space for innovation and creativity, right? So, and you often have resources and tools in there that allow students and staff in order to engage collaborative individually or with small groups to look at projects and invent and create different learning pieces, right? And it's cross-curricular in terms of having a library maker space where you integrate into different curriculum areas, right?
So a related question is, would that kind of activity respond to the desire among some constituents in our community to see more rigorous challenge of our students? Or would that be a strategy that would build excellence for everyone, no matter what point they're on?
Yeah, I think it would hit every continuum because it would engage students who like the tactile and want to investigate. It also engaged students at the high end who maybe have lead enrichment beyond what's happening in the classroom and now have an opportunity to go beyond that. Carson and I just last week went to the Makerspace at Champlain College. And they shared with us, they had students who were in gaming, who were in media services, journalism. And they were doing all kinds of creative work and connecting to outside organizations and things like that. And they gave us some examples of students who thrived in that setting, which was not the normal sort of classroom setting as opposed to the other. And so this was an opportunity for us because we, what we did put out when we were doing our consultations the last few years, we wanted great ideas from community, wanted them to get involved. And this particular group came forward, they did an application, they got some grant funds. And they came to us and said, we've got this money, we've got an architect, we've got an engineer, and we want to help create this space. We sent them away a year ago and said, you're not quite ready. We need more in order for us. And then they did, they stayed with it. They did the work and came back and said, this is what we can do. This would be a great model. Once we've done it, we can look at maybe doing this similar at our other schools as well, too. So we thought this was a great partnership between the school, between community partners and the organizations that have given grants already for this particular group. And we'd be able to give one-time funding to do that. So it's not something that would carry us in our budget. It's just one time. And we'd have an example of something that we could replicate if we chose to.
I know Kathy has a question on the same issue.
So I know what a Makerspace is. Having done after-school, we had them. But what I understood was both schools got all that stuff for a Makerspace last year to the tune of something like seventy-five thousand dollars each school, right?
They got some.
Not from the, from a grant. Was there not a grant?
They got some equipment, some grant-funded equipment, like I gave you the example of like three D printers, and I think that was part of it. But they don't have, this is a bigger project. This is taking those little pieces, like just flopping a three D printer over in the corner of your library doesn't truly make it a Makerspace. And this is a more comprehensive.
Tech ed room it does with computers and all that stuff.
So the difference between the two, the difference, the difference is one school is able to take that grant and connect with different community partners and say, hey, look, that's what we got. Can we expand this and make this bigger than what we're going to be able to do?
It's just seventy-five thousand sounds huge to me, knowing, you know, that they already have the most expensive part of it, which is all of the machines, right?
No, I mean, we're talking about, that's like remodeling the whole library into this. So that's, the machines are not the most expensive part of that process.
But again, I question then, where is?
Where is the what?
The both schools looking alike. We cut before for other things because both middle schools didn't have it. Now we're spending seventy-five thousand on a Makerspace, which is.
Well, as I said.
I know, I get it. You've got all these people moving.
One school actually went and found more money and got people engaged and said, this is what we want to do, right? And I put back the same question in terms of what about all our other schools, right? And they went back, this was two years ago, and they stayed with the project and developed it and got other community partners to say, we'll put this in in kind. We have an engineer that'll do this. We have an architect that'll do this. We've had to meet with our facilities, with Marty, and talk about, okay, what it would look like? How can we do it? So they've done a lot of groundwork. And we said, okay, well, we could do this as a pilot then. You've done so much work. And if it works out well, then we could look at replicating it in others, at our other schools. It'd be a best practice, right? That's the only reason why we don't have a proposal for six Makerspaces.
Originally you had two, but that's all right.
No.
No, you didn't. I thought there were two seventy-five.
And you have some more questions about this. Kathy, you might be thinking of a six-hundred thousand dollar grant that the high school got for a Makerspace. That did happen.
Wow, no.
There are two seventy-five at once for a special ed bus driver and eight. There's two seventy-fives right back to back. Maybe you saw that.
Maybe that was it. So when the kids go to the Makerspace, is it a different teacher there or is it their same teacher that stays with them?
We haven't gone that far yet. Right now, we have staff at the school who have technology expertise that have been playing the role of that, you know, facilitator to work with the other of their colleagues. We definitely see the purpose, a facility, a learning center for all staff to bring students in. And definitely we'll have identified experts at the building. And also we do have tech integrationists centrally assigned that can go to schools and work with teachers and students as well, too.
Thanks. And so you mentioned that this, that this district's investment won't change. Is it, is it going to stay at seventy-five? Is that what you meant? Or did you mean it's a one-time thing?
Yeah, one-time seventy-five.
And then what will happen in subsequent years?
Well, this is to create the space.
No, I know. But will this be absorbed by the budget?
No, it's one-time cost.
Oh, and that's it?
That's it.
It's like a, think of it as like a construction project.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Renovation. Thank you.
Yeah, renovation, yeah.
But it's not coming out of our instructions.
No, it's not part of the.
That's why it's here.
Plan. That's what, right?
That's why it's here, yeah.
The middle school electives that you mentioned at Edmonds, I mean at Hunt, are those, could you describe those and are they related to Act Seventy-Seven? And then a follow-up is how and when will we begin to develop seventh to eighth grade proficiency-based learning for Act Seventy-Seven? And will this feed into that, the electives?
Yeah, talk about the allocation first.
I believe it's not, so last year, when we made the addition, we made it and we had one FTE moved and it was allocated to Hunt. This was, in the halftime, there would be, I believe, health, if my memory serves me correct. And it would be actually, I think it would be at Edmonds Middle School, if memory serving me correct. So we're talking about them just needing an extra allocation to kind of have enough of that offering to serve the students. It's not.
Scheduling.
Wait, could you explain the deficit first and then this is a solution to what problem?
What, sorry?
Well, you're adding a halftime middle school electives person. What problem does that solve?
Oh, so the, what it does is it helps the school in terms of scheduling and reduces the class size for those electives. And some of you might have been on even communications last year when you talked about this, you know, sixty classroom band that was happening, right?
Oh, I didn't realize that.
Fewer involved in that, right? And so there were really large classes. So what they're asking for is another half allocation so they can offer another course, another elective. So now students, we don't have to put sixty kids into one elective. They have two choices. So you can split those two classes.
And Hunt already has that.
And Hunt, we gave Hunt a full FTE last year and they were able to do that. So we need to give Edmonds an additional two. We could coexist with what we have and they would have to do some elective that has sixty. But we thought, this is like a pressing need because it was creating some challenges. And so we thought we'd put this forward to help them relieve them of their scheduling challenge.
Right. This was a product of the middle school principals bringing this forward. And originally, we had a, you know, one-point-oh investment on there. And when we went back to them and we pressed on, you know, kind of what was the need to address it? You know, they, you know, would they prefer more? Obviously, the answer is yes. That's why they had it on there in the first place. But this was kind of the minimum that they felt was necessary. And obviously, in doing that, there's an acknowledgement that we're not going to, it's not going to go to two different places, right? Like last year, Hunt got an investment. This year, Edmonds will get the investment.
And then last question for now is which area in the technical center has the lower enrollment that can go with one teacher?
It's the design and illustration. I think I have that right. But the design and illustration realm, we had two. We actually increased there, thinking that maybe there was going to be more participation, but the growth was in other areas.
Does Essex offer it?
I don't remember if Essex offers. I don't think so, though.
I don't think they do. I don't think they're allowed to offer the same.
There's only certain, yeah, there's a lot of.
But we had, I remember this number specifically because we have eleven students registered for two teachers. So there's some room there.
Thanks.
Yes, we'll continue. We just don't need two teachers to teach eleven students, right?
Thanks.
Commissioner Wick.
And again, I want to say you've done excellent work and I appreciate the passion, too, Yao and Nathan, both of you. These are hard, hard choices that we're all making here. I'd love to see a version of the budget that does not include direct instruction cuts and sports cuts and what that looks like. And then if there's any sharpening of the pencil, or maybe even without further sharpening of the pencil on the enhancements. But if there is then a slighter tightening of certain enhancements that I hesitate to, I'm not going to draw the lines. I'll defer to you. But I'd like to see a budget and what it looks like tax-wise if we didn't cut the teachers and the, and the teachers we call interventionists and also the modest sports programs that we're cutting for.
All right, so folks, the, we're probably going to have two more meetings, okay? So the next meeting, which we'll figure out, we don't even have time for a doodle poll. We're going to have to try to do this, you know, gauge it tonight. What I, what I would like us to do in that meeting is first have a vote on the consensus on the distribution of the million-dollar surplus going back towards into the system, okay? We haven't made that decision yet, so it's still hanging there a little bit on a couple of slides. But just one second. And I think, I didn't want it. I didn't want a motion to a vote. Yeah. Yeah, it's not a big deal. It's going to take, we'll do it in the beginning of the.
It means to know whether you're working with it or not.
So straw poll, all those that do not believe we should use the million-dollar surplus towards. Sure.
What would be the alternative?
What would we do with it? Even if we chose not to spend it, where would we put it?
Commissioner Wick, I mean, Finance Director.
You can, so if you don't.
I was going to go right down the line for everybody by the time I get there.
By law, you have to use, you have to treat that money as revenue in the next year after, the next budget year. So that is the seventeen surplus that has to be rolled into the nineteen budget unless you ask the voters, can we do something else with it? Which is your other option. And you can ask them, you know, essentially what you'd be saying is, we don't want to spend it immediately. We want to put it in a reserve. If we were in a different fiscal situation, I would strongly recommend that you do exactly that. That you establish a reserve, that you put at least a portion of audited surpluses into that reserve on an annual basis. You might, for example, set a target reserve, say, we want to create a reserve for, and you could, you could pick different purposes. It can be for capital investment, which would be great if we had a nice big capital reserve fund instead of having to borrow all the money, right? But you could do that. You could do it for tax stabilization. You can pick a variety of things. But what you would do is say, and maybe you'd pick a target number, say, we want to have X amount of dollars or a certain percentage of our operating budget in a reserve. And every year, you would make a contribution to that. So there are things that can be done and you go to the voters and you ask to do that. But given the difficult conversation we've had here tonight and the challenges associated with the variables that are not under our control that make even discussing modest increases have kind of these crooked tax numbers, it's our recommendation that we apply it all as revenue with the caveat that I mentioned before, which is it's not a sustainable approach to budgeting. And hence why we at times preserve certain additions like the Makerspace that might not be the number one most important thing that could be done, but represents both a one-time cost so that we kind of slowly start to ease off of the, kind of the structural deficit issue we're facing and also meet some of the other criteria that we heard through our consultations, like taking, you know, making use of those in community partnerships and investments when we've gotten that. So that's long answered your question. But in short, other things can be done. You just have to ask the voters in order to do it.
So just as a straw poll, we'll still keep the vote for the next meeting. It's just be very, very quickly in the beginning of it. As a straw poll, is there anybody that would not use it to reduce, to create a negative up there to have a reduction of a million dollars against the budget as data? Is there anybody that would not?
I can't imagine the taxpayers.
And I'm just, I'm just trying to get you, I just want to know a yes or no right now to tell you the truth. We're going to, okay, so you, we're going to probably, we'll vote on that at the next meeting. But I think we can move forward having that applied, okay? I think the primary discussion the next time we're on is we really want to dig into the meat of the elementary school, right? And better understand how the, you know, I've been a manager a long time. I'll always be a proponent of do not just throw bodies at something and think that it's going to improve. This never, ever works. So what we need to find out in this case is really to the heart of the mechanics of how you plan on running those middle schools. That's not fair. Elementary schools, with these reductions, what happens to the life of, you know, the kid? How do we still support them with all the other things that we're, if we do agree to support the investments, okay? And then we'll still have, we'll probably even still have room for other after that. So I don't want to log in. I just want to make sure we have a little bit of a, an order of things. Commissioner Wick.
Quick question. Is the presentation yet available online? I didn't.
It will be.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So that being said, knowing that we're going to discuss these things, I think we've given him and Nate good marching orders as to what we, we want.
After that.
I actually do need some clarification because I've heard a range of comments. And the conversation was actually really good, but it was more programmatic than budget because you talked a lot about program implementation, really. And based on what I heard, I'd be coming back with a program presentation in terms of, this is what it looks like. But I need some direction around some budget pieces as well, too, because we're spending quite a bit of considerable time and we came up with these numbers to hopefully give you a barometer. And what I was looking for from the board is to say, you know what? You need to go lower or we're comfortable with going higher, right? And that helps us in terms of prioritizing and making those decisions. Otherwise, we'll probably be back in the same conversation over again, right, in terms of what.
So let me just start on this one just because, all right, so I'm not happy that it's so high. I said, I'm not happy that it's so high. I also know that you didn't come down to my challenge that I had thrown at you for the, to start at the four percent and then bring on. But why I, except for the little bit of salesmanship on the elementary school, I'm sorry, yeah, the elementary school side that I need to hear from you. I could sell a sub-seven, not to a six, but a sub-seven, based on everything that I know here, which I've never said that. But based on everything I know and the work that I know and the fact that I do trust you that you need to turn this school district around. So I could, I wouldn't fight what I just saw. You guys can give them other direction if you want to.
Do you want to just go around?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's go around.
Don't tell anybody. Commissioner McLaren?
You go get the staff first.
Yeah. After hearing from you and seeing this presentation, in my mind, like, this is my floor. And I think, I am looking forward to the next meeting to hear more about what some of the changes at the elementary schools and what that would mean. And I am open to being sold on it genuinely. And haven't made up my mind one way or another on this specific proposal. But, yeah, this is essentially, what I see is a floor personally. And in my conversations with the community members, I think there were people that were scared off by a headline that suggested an eleven percent increase. And so I was comfortable with where we were around at the last presentation meeting, sub-eight. with where we were around at the last presentation meeting, a sub eight, and that's sort of the range I'm looking at, but I'm still keeping an open mind to, if there are genuine investments to really achieve some of our goals, looking at those also.
Commissioner Lo?
I said this before, I'd like to see how you're going to change it, but I would also think that if those changes are going to come about, then we'd have to put funds into those changes. So, this six point nine two is no supports for that, which you want to change at all, right? Am I correct in understanding that?
No, we can't hear you down here.
Huh?
Talking to the mic, talking to the mic.
Oh. I said that, that the six point nine two percent is, is nothing in there or very little in there that would support the changes you're talking about. Am I correct with the grade schools and turning it around? Or, I mean, other than what you said with the supports for special, special, or.
So, you're saying we need more?
Well.
Are you asking a question?
Yeah, I'm asking you a question.
I'm asking you a question.
I would think that you would need more than six point nine two percent is what I'm saying.
That's what I wanted to know.
So, I am more than willing to go out for more than that. I would like to know what that is. I would go out to as far as nine because I think people know what's going on and most of what I've heard from people, far more people have said to me, we have to go this even if it goes up to ten because it's not, we don't want to see any more cuts. Now, if you change around, that's a difference, but.
Okay.
I think in the rate, rate around seven percent is okay. I think it will be helpful to have the portal in which all sides can hear the other side, but I think seven percent puts us in the path of addressing the areas that need to be addressed and also is something that can sell the budget. I, we'll just register a concern about the comment that we should put a budget out there and if it's rejected, so be it. The damage that is done when a budget is rejected is, is profound and I think we, we need to do our job as board members to figure out carefully what it is that will be acceptable and we need to do our job as board members to sell this budget once we've decided that that's the route we want to go.
Commissioner Curry?
Yeah, I'll just say again what I said last week, which is that I believe our, our budget and our rates of increase have been artificially depressed for the last three years and so, ideally, we could have a relatively predictable moderate increase that we need it every year, like around the five percent, but like in this year fifteen, it was one point nine nine or so, or one point seven four because of the legislature and then even though we approved a five point two five, we had three hundred thousand, over three hundred thousand yanked away from us, which is like a half a percent, so, I don't see much difference between six point nine two and seven, so seven is my minimum and I think that our job is to be leaders in the community around explaining to voters who feel like they can't pay anymore, that they've had kind of a break, plus the legislature gave them money back. And I also would look to the city to give a half a percent back because the city is robust in its reserves and part of those reserves are a result of all our pilot funds, so I'm ready to go out for over seven percent as a way of mitigating the negative impacts we've sustained, not by our choosing, for the past three years.
Commissioner Judson?
I'm willing to go to eight percent and if I were to go door to door, talking to people or open up a, you know, coffee kind of event at my house, I would love to have somebody else on the board come to support me in talking about the budget, eight.
Commissioner Boblo?
I too think this is a sort of a responsible number that sort of does meet the challenge in some ways. We've made cuts to places that are difficult to make cuts.
What's, what's a responsible number?
The seven percent, the six point nine two, seven-ish percent we're talking about. I think it's also one of the most challenging numbers because there's a bunch of people we've been getting mail from that says they can't spend anymore and this is clearly significantly more than not anymore, but it's also making cuts, so the people that say, whatever you do, don't make cuts, we'll pay whatever it takes, it's not really meeting their needs either, so I think in some ways, in some ways, we're sort of, this is the most challenging number for us to put before the voters, but one of the things that I would also like is, people have said they want, we need to talk to constituents about this and so, we don't have a good narrative right now around the educate, the elementary cuts and so, or let's call it reallocation, but we need, we need a better story to be able to, to tell that. We need to be able to explain to people who are concerned, like we all have expressed, that these are not damaging to the education of those young kids, so, I don't know, I don't know what that is, but I, I don't think it's a challenge or asking to be getting involved in the programming, it's getting, it's getting involved in the explanation of why this is good and worthy of support from the, from the community. What's up?
Yes.
I said this is a good number, you know, but I think it's a challenging number, but.
Commissioner Harrington?
Yeah, I think in a lot of ways, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Barlow, I, I mean, I, I don't know that six point nine two percent, seven point three percent, like I, I don't know that slightly above, slightly below seven is a meaningful distinction to me. This general, this seems to be in the general ballpark of a political compromise that could work. I, I think a budget going down, especially in a year in which we had a teacher strike, seems like that would be very depressing to community morale at a time where we need to be rebuilding morale in all quarters. I'd also echo what Commissioner Barlow said, I think, you know, the numbers are an abstract symbol for the spaces or people or activities that they sponsor and so, I, I'm really asking for just a different view about how to, how to see what does that mean. We can tell, in a way, I think we should, the bud, you've always said, in fact, that the budget and the strategic plan in some ways are two expressions of the same thing. So, we've, and, and I do really appreciate the way Nate has been continuing to carry those slides forward and I commend the speed with which you move through those, those early slides, so I do love the way we've been, you know, aggregating the proposals and so that we've built the fiscal explanation, I think, for, especially if we're planning to have another couple of meetings, coming back with, with the people's based, activity based version of what does this mean will make sense and gets, you know, as Commissioner Wick's been saying, these are hard choices, it's not easy, we don't always necessarily know what all of them really mean or even on some of those items, how much they would actually cost and so, I think the story will help us understand that another way of coming at this presentation would, would help us, so, that's what I think.
Commissioner Quinn?
I agree with that and I, I also think the six point nine two is a, a floor, a starting I think we could probably, but we need to compromise, but I think we probably could go a little bit higher if it means keeping some of those teachers. If I had to put a number on it, I'd still go back to the, my original thought of definitely under ten, but, you know, somewhere that shows that we are responsible, yet moving forward. So, I would say like eight would be, eight and a half would be my higher number.
Commissioner Wick? I, I believe I'd support a budget that, that didn't cut the elementary school teachers and didn't cut the interventionists, my own experience personally and from what I've heard is that they are important. I'm still open to being convinced that they're not, but.
They are important.
Okay, so, and I understand the passion that if what we've been doing hasn't moved the needle, we've got to do something, but I'm not convinced it's, it's cutting back the elementary school teachers and the interventionists and I would also ask, given the, the cost of those two sports is almost a rounding error, that I would be willing to support a budget that didn't cut permanently those two sports that you've selected. So, that's where I'm at right now.
Do you have a percentage?
I'd like to see what that number is, I mean, I'm not asking.
Fifteen percent.
What?
Fifteen percent.
I don't think so.
What, you, what do you mean, I think so.
Seven hundred and fifty percent. So, that, so one, so a half a percent.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter, he's just, he's just, he's joking, he's gonna get back to it.
Well, think about how the teachers are cut, it's the youngest, least.
Three hundred thousand.
It's the cheapest teachers.
Yeah, three hundred.
Half a percent is about four hundred thousand dollars, so.
Three hundred, three hundred, I think it's about three hundred.
Well, if you want to.
It's okay, it's okay, I got you.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate the joke.
I asked you to come back with that. So, you good with that?
Yes, yes, can I ask one more question?
You can.
The, how comfortable, probably, two questions, I'll get two questions in one, how comfortable are board members in, I'm gonna frame this, reductions to the investments slides that you've seen?
To the left.
The investment slides.
So, okay, so we're gonna have to go through this fast, right?
You can do, we can just do a hand, show of a hand or something if you want.
Could I advocate for us not doing that? I don't think it makes, it does not make sense to look at individual items.
No, I don't mean the individual, I'm, I'm asking a general question because the debate that you've had is everyone's, there's a sort of a tax number, but I'm getting a sense that people do want to grow the system, that's true, we still have to make some decisions, right? Still have to make some decisions around some of that.
All those in favor of the investments as they've been stated?
Well.
It's okay.
I can, I mean, I, I need, Thursday we'll have.
You want to have the, yeah, you want to have the context around that.
Yeah, just need more information.
Okay, so that, that actually answers my question.
Okay.
Right?
Need more information.
Because you, you want to, you could, you could move either way based on the information that you hear, right? So, no one's kind of like.
If I feel comfortable with the alternative.
Okay, it's okay, that kind of gives me enough information.
Okay, all right.
So, you gotta, you gotta give me a second, Kathy, please. So, what is your availability besides next Tuesday, which we have to have a meeting by Tuesday because we have to submit it on Wednesday? What is any other availability for you guys, you two?
Well, not really, I mean, we're always available, but.
So, you need some time?
We need some time to.
Okay, how about Monday, Tuesday?
Next week?
Next week, Monday, Tuesday.
Yeah.
It gives you money to come back, we get to chew on whatever comes, I mean, we've got a lot of information now, right? So, we get to really, we just, that's all we have and we, we have to put through on Wednesday, it has to be submitted to them, so how are we looking for Monday and Tuesday?
For a meeting Monday night and Tuesday night?
Monday, Monday and Tuesday night. Commissioner Harrington?
I'm wondering, I can imagine what the next meeting might look like because I have a good bunch of the questions you just raised, I'm not entirely clear.
What's the point of the second meeting?
To vote.
But they're so close together.
To vote, it's, it, it's just the timing is, you know, if I had a perfect world, I'd give you a week between them, but we don't have it. So, the one, the next meeting, I don't want to have the pressure on putting a vote just because we still have some things to clear up, so I want to make sure that we all feel very comfortable, we still have an extra night on that to chew after that, we get an extra night to actually hear back from constituents and we get to have the, your feedback that you're gonna put into the website, which we should have that information tomorrow as to getting that word out, so it's just that one extra day could help, you know, it's just a matter of us doing due diligence, it's just, this is a tough time for all of us, but I think this is really just allows us to feel much better about any decisions we might make, so, Monday, Tuesday night, Commissioner Wick?
That's fine. Do we expect any movement at all on the legal use of pilot funds? Because this is the first time I've heard, I believe that you've gotten sort of the AOE blessing on a number of uses and the city's offer so far was so darn low.
Just for clarity, so we've had, that, that wasn't the, the, the support and the kind of clearance from the Agency of Education that I referenced earlier, something that we've had for a couple of years, that we've been doing that, so what we're talking about there was expanding the city support for those programs and the reason we thought it was attractive was because we didn't have the same hurdle with the Agency of Education that has been raised as an objection or a potential hurdle at least is what the city's objected to with some of our other efforts to get more city support. So, just, just to be clear, like we've, it, what we did was say, okay, well, some of our other more innovative ideas have been repulsed with the logic that the Agency of Education probably wouldn't support it or might not support it or whatever and, you know, people such as myself might differ in their assessment than the city, but the items that we put on there, the first two items were the, were specifically on there because we are already, we already have that relationship with the city for supports of those activities and the Agency of Education knows it and has said it's okay. So, that's what, but whether or not we get anything beyond the commitment that the, that we talked about tonight, the additional transportation and like another thirty thousand dollars, who knows?
Another five hundred thousand?
Right, I mean, that would be nice, we, I would love to hear that.
So, I'd like to limit any questions only to those that bring clarity to, and I know we have a lot of questions, but we're also gonna have another meeting that we can add them on, right? So, is there anything that has to be answered, besides the superintendent, is there anybody else that has a question that has to be answered tonight?
This is, this is in advance to Commissioner Wick.
Commissioner Superintendent.
The, I did speak with the mayor today and he said he is open to speak with board members or representatives around any potential gains. Wasn't, he wasn't optimistic that there was any sort of, anything forthcoming, but he was still open to have conversations with people, so.
And I haven't had the opportunity to have an in-depth conversation around rationale for this last proposal, aside from hearing exactly what Nathan said, that, that the city's willing to offer those things and an expressed commitment to having additional conversations around some of the Community Justice Center, the Community Justice Center proposal in the city's budget, but I plan to do that very soon and will happily inform you all on what, how that goes.
Can I have a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Kleeman, seconded by Commissioner Barlow, all those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those against? Passionately, we are adjourned, thank you.